On record.
All right, let's call to order the City of Lincoln City City Council meeting for March 25, 2019, 6:00 PM. Roll call, please.
Mayor Anderson.
Yes.
Councillor Casper.
Here.
Councillor Hinton.
Here.
Councillor Hoagland. Councillor Coos.
Present.
Councillor Mark.
Here.
Councillor Parsons.
Present.
Thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Thank you all for coming this evening. At this time, we can skip right down to public comments. If there's anybody who's interested in making a public comment, come forward. I'll -- it doesn't look like there's going to be an overburdened call up and -- thank you, sir.
Your Honor, just for clarity, that we -- the consent agenda, the item that was there was taken off?
Oh, I'm sorry. I should have mentioned that. Yes, that was -- that's true. We pulled the consent agenda item for the minutes for -- to be corrected. That's why we've gone direct to the public comment. Mr. Baird, please state your name.
I'm Stacy Baird, Lincoln City. I came before you today to talk about the VRDs in the Roads End District. It had occurred to me, as I was sitting at my home this weekend, and before, actually, but I really thought about it a lot this weekend. And one of the ideas that came to me, as we all know, when we did the zoning for Roads End, we decided that there should be a moratorium on the VRDs in this area until it came down to a certain level that we all agreed on. Lo and behold, I got a notice in the mail notifying me that we were putting more VRDs in Roads End. So that prompted me to do some more thinking. And I went, "Well, you know, I don't -- we come into making statutes and things of this nature in order to ensure public safety and ensure the livability of our communities and other reasons, but this is primarily the ones that I come to mind to." And the results are not really satisfactory to me. And I thought, "Why do we make statutes that require a home to have certain improvements on it when we build it? And then we turn around and offer people that for a fee, they no longer have to do these improvements?" And I'm talking about deferred improvement agreement, okay? Now, I can understand why the deferred improvement agreement exists. I also can understand why you would make a fee for people that have financial hardships. But it also occurred to me that these are fully functional, commercial uses of property in a residential zone. They are not permitted uses. Yet, we allow these things not even to have the basic statute-required improvements that we expect houses to have. We allow them to commercially full-rent residential homes, and they're not even up to standard. We come in and we give them deferred improvement agreements. And I think this should be not something that Lincoln City supports. We should go in and -- the city's bound at some point in the land use part of this, but we are not bound in the licensing of VRDs. And we can very well make a criteria of the licensing of a VRD that all improvements are intact on the building and not allow homes that are substandard be rented full-time commercial use to the public. It doesn't seem to me like, once we make a statute for public safety and then we circumvent it so people can rent their homes in a full commercial use. I'm not talking about an accessory use. I'm talking about a full commercial rental. Now, we came to the idea, excuse me. I should turn this off. I apologize to the council. I think that you should not allow commercial VRDs in the city unless they come up to standard, period. In Roads End, we have agreed through our zoning that we would have a 10% VRD rate in our community, in our neighborhood. Yet, we're running more than 22% of the lots, more than a third of the existing improved buildings. So if you count just houses and not lots, we've got almost a third, one in three houses, are full commercial use. Now, we're looking at safety, the roads, the people, the influx. This weekend, I had three people defecate on my private property. I had one trespasser who was looking for some trailhead that doesn't exist. There is no trail that goes up to God's thumb through Roads End, Logan Road, to the north. It doesn't exist, yet we market it that way sometimes. I don't know what the city's marketing. I speak out of turn. But it's very frustrating. And I sat Sunday and counted 75 people walking up Branded Road, which is the road that's at the end of Logan Road, that belongs to the Bells. Seventy-five people in one hour, from 4:00 to 5:00 PM yesterday. I also sat at my house and I counted 65 people on the beach, just on my frontage. May I complete? I'll be brief, please.
Briefer, okay.
The point is, we were promised when we ran next to Better Life. That was part of the higher thing that the council promised us. Our lives have not gotten better. They have gotten worse. And I can show you time and time again where I've tried to work with the council to get something done. I've tried to work with the authorities here, and nothing's working. And I'm wondering when the City Council is going to come and do something about it, not just talk about it.
Thank you, Mr. Baird. Sheila.
Good evening, and thank you for allowing me opportunity to speak to you. My name is Sheila Stiley, and I'm the Executive Director for Northwest Coastal Housing. Northwest Coastal Housing began as a Lincoln County Community Development Corporation in 1991, so we've been around for a minute. And we incorporated in '92 and built the Ridge Apartment Complex here in Lincoln City. It's an 80-unit apartment complex that many of you are familiar with, I hope. And our location right there is right next to the schools and prime location for families, for individuals who want to attend college, and it's just in a great location. We have worked diligently over the last, I'm going to say, nine years, to really bring that property up to speed. I hope you have all had opportunity to tour it. If you have not, please contact me so we can do so. A little bit about Northwest Coastal Housing. We really believe in housing first. And a couple of things you may not know about us is, first of all, we provide Resident Services Coordination. What that means is, we provide services to all of the residents there. So whether that is access to energy efficiency funds, whether that is access to rental assistance, whether that is employment, workforce-type development they're trying to create for themselves, employment opportunities. We also provide after-school and summer programs for kids. A lot of you may not know that. It's free of charge, but we do that for our latchkey kids. I hate that term, but really, that's what it is. And it's not only to our Ridge residents. We also provide that to other surrounding neighborhoods, too, to our location. We do provide STEM programming. We provide tutoring. We provide lots of activities for them to do. In addition, we provide ESOL classes. We also provide first-time homebuyer and financial fitness classes. As a matter of fact, in 2017, six families were able to purchase their first-time homes after living at our complex and attending our programs. So we feel, in a way, you guys sort of classified us, I think, in the permanent supportive housing prospect. And so that is kind of where we sit. We're kind of in the middle. One thing you may not know as well is that we have a contract with My Sister's Place. Actually, the property was built on the prospect that they are to have at least two preference units per year for their DV victims. Interestingly enough, we provide probably three to five per year just for them. That doesn't include the others that come to us through other agencies, such as DHS and CSC and those other partner programs that we work with. In addition, we also work with Family Promise. We have the same time commitment to Family Promise. We provide them two preference units as well for their families who have, well, they raised the age from 18, I believe, to 22 now. But we try to provide them housing as well. And again, it's not just two per year. It's actually three to five. We provide housing for veterans. We provide housing for seniors. We believe in aging in place. We hope that people take the opportunities that we provide them to enhance their living situations to a better place. So we feel like we're that gap. We're that link between homelessness to future home buyer. And we do rent the Ridge out specifically to 50 and 60% of the area median income. Now, people who move in there have to qualify underneath their income, but they can graduate up to a higher level. They just have to be at that income upon move-in. However, 20 of those units are not that. They are much more restricted. So they are the 50 and 60% of the area median income, of which we have to go under compliance checks per year. What we have the ability to do is to transfer those to like units, to other places and other families that are in more of need and others who have risen above where that level is. So we call those floating units. We can float them to another family in need. Now, that's only Lincoln City. We also provide housing for mental health victims suffering from alcohol and drug backgrounds. Mental health is our Resident Services Coordinator for that. We require and need the absolute partnerships that we have in place, whether that is with the Community Services Consortium, the Help Centers, whether that's with My Sister's Place, Family Promise. We work with the Blamette Neighborhood Partnership to be able to bring first-time homebuyer partnerships and financial fitness classes, as well as a CSC, as well as bankers here. We need everybody to help us to take people to that next level. I appreciate the properties that we have because of what they're able to provide to our residents. I mean, it's not just Lincoln City. It's not just Newport. It's not just Toledo. It's all Lincoln County. And we want to continue that prospect. We want to build more because, quite frankly, it's specialized facilities that there just are not enough of. Thank you for your time.
Thank you for the information. Thanks for coming up.
I had a question, Mr. Mayor. I've been curious about the -- thank you for coming. Interesting presentation. What kind of waiting list is there to get into the Ridge? And how long does it usually take?
Good question. We have actually been told we need to weed through our list a little bit more because of the dynamic change with individuals and their families. On our three bedrooms, we were just told we had about 44 people on the waiting list. In our two bedrooms, we have little over 25. And that's weeding through the list.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thanks, Sheila.
Thank you.
John Force.
Hi, everybody. I'm John Force, 1820 Northeast West Devils Lake, Lincoln City. Just giving you an update of that fiasco of a contest you had a couple of weeks ago. Just a follow-up from my comments from last council meeting. As expected, I have heard several of Gabe Smith's rival contest sponsors are upset about Gabe's lack of promised webcast of the live event and left Lincoln City with a black eye. There will also be citations issued by Oregon State Parks for lack of permits for sponsor tents and beer on the beach at D. Sands Motel. Additionally, I lost an emergency sponsorship of $50,000 from Paul Schulte, who reconsidered after pulling a support of 14 years. He wrote, "John, after the recent confusion with the two potential surf contests at Nelscott Reef a few days ago, I have decided to withdraw my involvement and the $50,000 that I was going to invest in the event as a co-promoter. This ongoing conflict and the Lincoln City officials, who just cannot seem to get their act together, has been the final straw for me. I have enjoyed being a sponsor of the event for many years. He's the founder of Liquid Militia LLC, and a past contest participant, 2005, 2006. It is time to look at other opportunities. I wish you the best and have always enjoyed working with you. You say what you mean and do what you say. All my best and good luck. Mahalo." Paul Pablo Schulte, founder, president of Liquid Militia, from 2004 to 2018. As you can see, the city officials themselves, whose job it is to provide support and draw events to Lincoln City are the biggest blocks doing just that. Additionally, my other biggest and longest-standing sponsor, the Oregon Sports Authority, the agency that sanctions all the biggest sports event in Oregon, from the Blazers, Timbers, and Thorns Soccer, Winterhawks Ice Hockey, to the NCAA's Track and Field and Portland Marathon, dropped us three years ago due to confusion and mismanagement by city officials. These sponsors don't grow on trees and had been longstanding sponsors because they got what they were promised, and losing them was not my doing. It was an absurd dual-permit system masterminded by Richard Apicello, pitting two promoters after the same limited resource, which this year will manifest itself in fines and pissed-off sponsors who will not come back. Richard's fiasco was followed up by Mr. Chandler's awarding the second permit to Gabe Smith, who was fined for not having a special event permit last year. Mr. Chandler awarded the permit, knowing full well that sponsors, including Councillor Coos from Lincoln City Mall and many other local businesses, had been swindled out of sponsorship money, and by awarding that permit allowed another generation of sponsors to be duped, as has happened at Gabe's contest. As the damage manifests itself, I will be reporting back and updating the council, and I am still waiting for Ron Chandler's master plan for the future of the event. Thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else that missed the opportunity to sign up and wants to come forth, please do. Seeing none, thank you. Moving on with our agenda, we have a continuation of a public hearing. It is now 6:20 PM. The continued public hearing for File ZOAT 2018-02 is now open. The public hearing concerns a city-initiated proposal to amend Title 17 zoning in Chapter 17.72 sign ordinance to update the city sign ordinance, including changes for content neutrality, consistency with ordinance 2018-13, grammatical, and other changes. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on November 6, 2018, and forwarded a recommendation to divide the ordinance and prefer controversial matters to design review. Consistent with the Planning Commission, on February 25, 2019, council directed the ordinance be split, moving the grammatical and content-based language corrections and consistency issues to a separate ordinance, brought back to council to be continued public hearing on March 11, 2019. Other changes were to be reduced to writing and referred to design review. The controversial matters are highlighted in green in the council communication. The City Council's role in this legislative process is to consider the Planning Commission's recommendation in written or oral testimony, as well as information from staff, and make a final decision as to ordinance amendments or new ordinances. The City Council may adopt the recommendation or may take other action, including decline to make any ordinance revisions. At this point, Mr. Apicello, if you could go through the staff report.
Okay. Thank you, Your Honor. So there are a few, five, issues which I basically highlighted, but I really think that we should start with number three, which is on packet page 12. And there it's -- the issue is, Richard Townsend had to find flag in the draft. And in the current ordinance, flag is listed under exemptions. So if you were to just leave the existing ordinance alone, we would just add flags under the exemption section. If you were to accept that flags need to be defined, then Richard had proposed a definition which you see there, which in some, it's really just basically saying that the hoist, the width, and the length have a certain ratio. If you look at the other green highlighted definition of flag there from the City of Portland, it basically has the same kind of issue where it talks about any one side is three times as long as the other dimension. And that's probably an intentional definition to exclude what are called banner -- sorry, feather banners. Some marketers call them feather flags. So where we have here as a controversial issue is that some vendors have been using feather banners and saying, "Well, I can do this because it's a flag." And of course, your planning director, former planning director, didn't believe that a feather banner was a flag. Thus, he proposed this definition to clarify it. And I do not believe your new planning director believes that a feather banner is a flag. So that we could punt and give this issue to design review and says, "You guys sort it out. We'll just leave flags exempt," or we could go with what Richard had recommended or the definition that the City of Portland recommended. So that's kind of like the first issue. So the clear choice is add a definition of flag and/or don't add a definition of flag and add flags under exemption. The second part of that is, Mr. Townsend had actually done -- did two things with respective flags. He proposed that we specify that flags are no longer exempt, but you'd be limited to three flags. If you're a commercial, two flags, I believe, he recommended, if you're residential. So there's two parts. First part was definition. Second part was a numerical limit on the number of flags. So you could do nothing, not impose a numerical limit, and push that issue to design review, or you can impose a numerical limit. My recommendation is that you do both, that you define it, either using Richard Townsend's definition or the Portland definition, and that you impose a numerical limit on the number of flags. And there's really kind of two reasons for that, is that this seems to be the issue, and we can just continue the way we've been going, where we're going to have to take enforcement actions against people that are putting out feather banners, or we can try to address this and give them an opportunity to experiment with. And so that's the second part of this, is that if you define flag and you put a numerical limit on it, I've proposed a kind of a compromise, which takes -- this is number four, question number four, which is, should you allow the people in commercial zones to substitute two feather banners for traditional flags? So if you're allowed three flags, and just picture a rectangular-looking flag that says "open." If you have three flags, we can't control the content of what a flag says. You can have a rectangular flag that says "open," or we could have a feather banner that says "open." They accomplish the same thing. Feather banners might not be as flappy and hit you in the face as you're walking by. And maybe that's a reason to give it a try. So the language I propose is a definition and an allowance for, in a commercial zone, for two of the three flags to be substituted with feather banners. And that allowance would expire within six months. It would sunset. So that we could basically give that information to design review and see if they work. Again, this is feather banners on their own property, not in the right of way, because it's just simply not authorized to be there. So that's question number four, which is basically an allowance for substituting two feather banners for two of your regular flags. If you don't want to do that, then we can just go back to add flags as exempt. And then, in the code enforcement process, we'll be going to municipal court with people claiming that they have flags and planning staff saying, "No, that's not a flag. That's a banner." And then the judge will sort it out. So I'd rather like the compromise because it avoids all that court and stuff. And we adopted an ordinance last year, 2018-13, and that ordinance prohibits all temporary signs, except the ones listed. So there's just a couple exemptions there. Now, I can argue that, well, I recognize some of the exemptions in Title 17, and so I could say, "Okay, well, maybe flags are still permitted." But certainly, feather banners can fall under that as well. So we have actually two provisions that feather banners will be violating, not just one. So that takes me back to question number two here, which was about what I was trying to find in this ordinance, what were the controversial issues? Most of the ordinance is simply Richard Townsend rewording things. It was grammatical. I did more organizational things where I moved things around to better have it make more sense. But I don't really agree with some of the changes that Richard made grammatically or changing the word "shall" to "must" and different things. Apparently, they had planners that went to a conference, apparently told them all they should change "shall" to "must," and "shall" is outdated, and blah, blah, blah. But I don't really agree with that, but I left that alone because I didn't want to change substantively what was there. But again, the prohibition in ordinance 2018-13 on all temporary signs, except for the ones that were clearly listed there or otherwise allowed in the municipal code, one of those prohibitions would be for inflatables. So inflatables is not listed as an exempt thing that you can have under the current ordinance or in ordinance 2018-13. So inflatables, to me, are, you know, the wavy-arm guy with the blower or these kind of Christmas things with the blower that keeps them inflated, or even balloons that are attached. So technically, they're prohibited now by ordinance 2018-13. But we have an exemption in our ordinance for holiday period, in November through January. And we didn't allow for -- we will allow flashing signs and different things during that period of time, but we didn't allow for the inflatable, you know, snowman or whatever it is that you see. And I know I even specifically listed that there's a moving inflatable And I know I even specifically listed that there's a moving inflatable Santa in a little outhouse out here on Highway 101 that we all, we've all seen. So when looking at the inflatable, trying to make these ordinances consistent, Richard had said in this Title 17 that inflatables and balloons were prohibited. In ordinance 2018-13, we said all temporary signs are prohibited, except the ones that are listed. But we have this exception for this November through January, so I'm recommending that we maybe allow the inflatables not to exceed a certain size during that period. So there, you see a proposed amendment to ordinance, and this is in ordinance 2019-15, to add an allowance for inflatables. The other thing that comes out of this section is the provision for flying signs. So in the current ordinance, if you look at the exempt, exempt signs, there's a list, it says kites, windsocks, and flags are all exempt. Setting flags aside, kites typically fly, windsocks are kind of more like flags. But those things could essentially remain exempt. We could just say kites, windsocks, flags stay in the exempt thing. Or we can prohibit flying signs, which is the way the League of Oregon City put it. Richard had prohibited balloon signs. I expanded it to use the terminology that the league uses, which is flying signs. So balloons, blimps, kites, anything that's aloft and caught by the wind. If you, if you do nothing, I can argue that, well, certainly balloon signs and blimps are prohibited under the general catch-all in ordinance 2018-13. But if you want, we can put kites, windsocks back in the exempt line. What I tried to do with the windsock issue was same thing that Richard did with flags. I put a number on it. I said, okay, everybody can have two windsocks. Defined windsock, it's typically, and it's kind of like an airport term, because they're typically used in airports to show you what the wind's blowing and direction, but they're now more, much more decorative and are used in that way. But the danger with those is they need to be securely attached to a pole or a structure. So like what Richard had proposed for flags, I simply said, you can have two, commercial or residential zone, didn't matter. So, and then the last issue was, well, there's two other issues. One was, issue one was, we, when I did the ordinance last year, we kind of went through the existing ordinance, and we tried to get rid of the content-based garage sale, for example. And we got rid of that and said, okay, we can have a sign that you can use when you have an authorized sale. Now, we probably have just too many sign allowances there, and they're vague. It doesn't have to say garage sale, or clearing sale, house sale, or going out of business sale. They could say, I like beer, or whatever it is that you want to say on your sign. So instead of having one of these time-limited sales, signs, which are signs that you can have during periods where there's a sale, and you can say anything you want on them, we could propose getting rid of that exemption and then increasing the size of exemption number one, which is a four-square-foot sign instead of a two-square-foot sign. So instead of having a sign that you have to take down, you can have four-square-foot signage. So if you're a business, you have that four-square-foot sign all year. Now, you can't have a going out of business sale all year. That, that has to do with commercial activity, it doesn't have to do with the sign. So the sign could say whatever you want it to say, go Seahawks or whatever, and doesn't have anything to do with this sale, that regulation, which is in chapter five, stays and still operates. It's just not tied to the signage. And I asked your planning director, your new planning director, if that was something that interested her, and she agreed that we could get rid of that allowance for sign, sale, time, sign, and substitute a larger sign all the time. So that was issue one. And then the last issue is something I didn't actually expect you to make, but I was kind of surprised to see that we have an allowance in our code to encroach 24 inches into the public right-of-way with a overhanging sign. Staff would recommend we get rid of this, but because it was not something what we touched on previously, we just created the language and said, you might want to refer this to design review. That's the gist of it. There are changes here for ordinance 2019-14, which is Title 17, and there's ordinance 2019-15, which is the 9-34 section, which again, doesn't require a public hearing, but I put it in the packet because I was trying to make changes that are consistent. It's something we probably should have done well before now, but changing Title 17 takes time, whereas writing 934 was something we were able to accomplish fairly quickly. So I'd be happy to answer your questions.
So questions of staff? And so the, the record councilman, Riley, Riley Hoagland has joined us. Thank you, Riley.
Mr. Mayor. I recall that, and I checked the video of our February 25 meeting, and we had decided unanimously to move all but content-based sign discussion to the commercial design standard project. I brought this up to Richard last week through an email, and so I'm still curious why we're discussing it tonight when we had decided to move all of this, I mean, the draft, all the draft language would go to the design standard project. I just watched it again today.
Yeah, I, I thought we split.
Content-based.
Yeah, content and.
Separate.
To bring back, and.
This is not content. This is size, shape, what it looks like.
Okay.
How many. And that was going to the, to the commercial design standard project.
Okay. Others? Thoughts?
Mayor.
Yep.
I have a question on when we put a number amount on the flags. And I know it's, the one thing that comes to mind is the Kiwanis flag program they do that brings out the American flags during very patriotic dimes. How would that affect that?
It, it doesn't do that. It does not affect that because those flags are not being placed on private property, they're being placed on public property. It's probably unauthorized by ODOT. It's, there's a problem with using those holes in the sidewalk and possibly creating obstructions for ADA issues. And we need to address that with Kiwanis and our ADA coordinator. It may very well be that we should ask the business owners on 101 to place a bracket on their building and that where they could accept the Kiwanis flag during those periods of time, and then we could basically add an exemption for that kind of a event. But I, the, I can't tell you that we've been authorized by ODOT to place those flags.
Is that more in the Ocean Lake area versus the Cultural Center, because they do it on their lawn?
Yeah.
Or the Outlet Center?
Yeah, if it's on, if it's on private property, then you're going to have to, there would be a limit on the number of flags, regardless of what, whether it was an official flag or an open flag or whatever.
Okay.
If I can, Councilor Hinton raised the question of, you know, bringing this back in this form. And so what I was looking for is further discussion. So, you know, she raised, raised the issue and to see where, where you are as a council on this. I'm assuming the, Mr. Apicello, the grammatical and content stuff wasn't as significant, or?
Well, the, I, I did write the staff report and, including the motion that we're talking about. And my intention was to make this ordinance consistent with ordinance 2018-13, where it hadn't previously been done. And I wanted to highlight the controversial issues, which I did. Everything else to me was unremarkable. Some, some grammatical things I didn't particularly like, or style things I didn't like. I did move things around and put some new captions on things to better organize it. And I highlighted, for the most part, where I was asking you to either make the change or refer it. So I think I did what the council asked. I toyed with throwing, everything Richard had done away, and just taking 1772 and striking only those things that were content-based, the definition of real estate sign, the definition of temporary political signs. But that would have been very small ordinance, because there's frankly not that much. What I did do was try, in terms of the definitions, and Richard had enormous amount of definitions in his ordinance, I tried to clarify that where there is still content, those are government signs. And obviously, Article 1, Section 8 does not apply to government speech. So if we're speaking, it doesn't apply. If we're providing, and I sent you guys the case on this, if we're providing a forum, whether or not it's a bus that, or a train that's wrapped with, or public area in an airport, that we would, if we were making that available for others to speak, we'd have to have a content-neutral base. But where we speak with the scoreboard at the ball field, or the sign that says stop or tsunami evacuation zone, where we speak, those, even though we're calling out the specifics and the content of that sign, because it's a government sign, it's not a violation of the content neutrality.
I also heard, I thought I heard you say in your staff report that because of the earlier ordinance in 2018, if we don't do something, like currently, there's the enforcement issue of, in this case, banners and flags, which is in conflict? Is that, did I understand that?
I think that what has been happening is people tell the planning department that I didn't put out a banner, a feather banner, I put out a flag, and flags are exempt. And so we're going to end up in court fleshing that out. And I, I think that, you know, it could go either way, but it's kind of a wasteful practice. It's probably the only controversial issue in this ordinance. And what I sought to do was to create a mechanism to avoid that by having a sunset clause and testing whether or not feather banners, feather flags, whatever you want to call them, could be used in the city in lieu of regular flag, two of your regular flags. And I, I did that because I didn't want to waste a lot of time arguing with people about whether or not they were flags or banners.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Is there currently something going to the court? I mean, you've said that twice. Are we threatened with a lawsuit? I mean, why, why do you believe that we're at that stage today where this can't go to, as we voted unanimously, to go to the, the design standard project? I mean, that's, and so the timing, I'm looking at our planning director, so that would, the timing of when that'll wrap up would be important.
Council had basically, in its goal-setting, talked about enforcement and how we need to enforce our code.
Right, well, we can wait for the process.
And feather banners have really been one of the issues. They pop up in, in the right-of-way, where they're not really authorized. And sometimes they show up on, on people's property set back with a pier block attached to them. But it's something, if we're going to enforce our code, we could deal with now. If you don't want to deal with that now, we can refer the whole matter to design review.
Which is what we did. If I could continue, do we know when that project is?
So the city currently has a contract under, for design review, but it does not include any scope of work for the signage that was directed back. So we would need to do a contract amendment or establish a new contract to move forward with the signage issues. When we go into design review for signs, I do not think that we can limit it just to feather banners and flags. We want, the whole community will want to look at height, site, size, height, square footage. However, there are content neutrality issues that we do need to address in the ordinance. Right now, if, if council chooses to not move on a definition of flags or adding a definition of feather banners, they are not legal. And the, you know, and enforcement is a priority of the department at this point, and so we would need to go on to that. With the direction of saying, bring it into design standards, it puts me and my department in an uncomfortable situation of going and enforcing something that then we ask for your feedback a week later on something. But I do understand the concerns and the need to look comprehensively at the city's signed ordinance.
So I have a question, and further discussion on this is, so council did unanimously, so this three times now, we did ask that all of this be moved to that project that you are overseeing. So that's, that's one thing. The content base was something that was going, that was on the agenda, should have been for this meeting, as I heard back at our, I watched the last, I mean, the February 25th meeting video. And so my question then is, if a, if a decision outside of what we've already voted on happens tonight, and whatever that answer is, and then you get that, I'm assuming that would go then to you for the, the commercial design standards to put that in, you know, the hopper with the rest of ideas of design and, you know, how big, how, whatever, could be moot? What if it comes back and said, what if the, that project comes back and advises, no banners, no this, no that, just one type of signage, which it could? Then what? I mean, I think this is a little bit, you know, I understand the situation we're in with enforcement, but we haven't enforced so far, so what's the problem? I mean, why can't we, can I, if, so I know you have to do another scope of work, you have to broaden the contract to include this, but that's in, back, back in February is when we asked for that to happen. And so I'm kind of at a loss here. I don't, I don't think we should be considering this. That's my opinion, based on what we have decided in past meetings. And because it could be used or not used, I can see that this, like, these ideas that Richard has spent quite a bit of time and thought on could be sent to the group, you know, to the consultants to look at, to factor in that this is what the staff thinks is important, but.
Mr. Chadler, do you want to weigh in, or your thought?
I would. So in our discussions that I've had with Mr. Apicello, Mrs. Mill, and all of the others, we are moving forward with considering the banners in the design standards. They are right, enforcement is an issue for us, however, we have not been enforcing those for a long time. However, the other side of it is, if we do get complaints about them, then we do have to take some action. We can't just look the other way. We can't just look the other way if a complaint comes. And often our enforcement has been complaint-driven, and that could be the case in this. When we discuss this, the intent behind this was to highlight some of those controversial areas which Mr. Appicello has done. If you are not interested in addressing those, but as, tonight, and just want to completely focus on the content-based part of it, that's, they just get left out. That's all, that's all there is to it. But we did want to highlight what the controversial issues were. And then just note that we are moving forward with the design review, which will include these in it, as you did indeed instruct us. But also just note that as enforcement goes, often our enforcement is complaint-driven, and if we receive a complaint, we would need to address that.
Mr. Mayor?
Hold on. Counselor?
So if we don't do anything, we're in the same position as we've been with the complaints? So right now, if somebody complains, then we go out and do something?
That is exactly right, yeah.
My question would be then, okay, so what if counsel decides to take this up, which we had decided before not to? But what if the majority does, then things are changed now for now? And then what if, when the design work gets completed?
That does not negate your previous direction to us to consider that, unless you were to tell us no longer consider it in the design review. We will still consider it no matter what action you take tonight, unless you were to say, we no longer want it reviewed in the design. If you were to adopt these tonight and we find that there are some changes that were to come out of the design review, then we would put those in the ordinance to change those.
Yeah, my question is though, if I were a business and right now I was using them and, oh, I realized I'm not supposed to, oh, and then city council changes, I can only use two or whatever. And then three months from now or whatever that comes back, then it changes again. I mean, I don't know which is worse for trying to catch up with what the new city ordinance is if you're a business.
That's fair enough.
Any other thoughts from the counselors, weigh in? Thoughts of what you want to?
Mr. Mayor, I have, I know, I had emailed Mr. Appicello about the, for real estate signs. The local Board of Realtors has a 30-day removal period. So I know in our ordinance it was 10. So I don't know if now is that time or not.
Well, ordinance 15 amends 934, that has that 10-day period. So if you want me to return with ordinance 15, which is not a land use ordinance, I can bring that back and you can make a recommendation to?
On that?
On that one.
Yeah.
As to ordinance 14, which is a Title 17 amendment, I can, you could send that whole thing off to design review and I can write a fairly short ordinance that just deletes a couple of the objectionable content-based definitions, like real estate sign and political, temporary political signs. Because that's just cleanup, because those things were really taken care of last October, because there's a clause in that ordinance last year that says this controls over inconsistent provisions, Title 17. So we could, we could do that. I'm not really worried about the content neutrality threat, because we took care of that in October. Richard had a lot of other edits and changes, and I think the definitions and the clarification between government signs and other types of signs, I think is important and useful. I don't agree with everything, but I, you know, don't want to throw it all away. I think that you could send the whole thing as it's written, with the issues highlighted to design review and say, you know, take this and show up at a planning commission meeting this date, you know, Mr. Contractor or whatever, and let's, maybe we want to remand this to the planning commission at a date certain and see if we can get the design review team to show up at that meeting and meet that schedule. It's up to you.
So I guess the question I would have to maybe help Counselor Hinton's earlier question. You proposed, Richard, a six-month sunset provision. So to define, but let it ride for six months to gather feedback, which probably works a little bit in sync with the design standard stuff. Does that take away any kind of conflict with enforcement? I mean, if, as I read it, it would remove the violation of having a feather banner in front of my building today.
By defining flag and allowing for some feather banners and substituting for flag, you would, you would, you know, anger people who want to put more than two feather banners out there. But they, we wouldn't be in the position of arguing in court that, you know, they're allowed to have feather banners because they're flags, which is what their argument is. They're just saying, it's not a feather banner, it's a feather flag. And then our position is, it's a banner, not a flag. And we can avoid that argument, but that was the whole point, to gather data for design review. If you don't want to do that now, that's fine. But we wouldn't, we'd just be taking this whole ordinance and pushing it off at the design review. And if you want, I'll come back with the ordinance 2019-15 just to clean up Title 934. And if you want, I can come back with a small cleanup to Title 17 to delete the definitions that are objectionable, because basically there's not much else there. I just didn't want to throw all of Richard's work away, because a lot of it had value. And I may not have agreed with all, but I thought that it had value.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I just, I'm just trying to think of maybe some middle ground here. I don't like counsel direction and votes to just not be adhered to. So I'm, I have to say, I'm rather stuck there. But there's one thing that I just thought of that could be kind of a middle ground for getting from this set of changes to whatever comes out of the project changes, which would be wholesale and, you know, it would be a good design look at the city and what we want to look like, so it'll be comprehensive. But, and I just feel for some of these businesses and as we learned at some of the, through some of the testimony in the past, that not all businesses, quite a few in fact, don't belong to the chamber. So I was trying to think of how businesses get to know all this. They don't watch city council meetings, they're trying to do business. What about a letter to the businesses, just to tell them if this is approved? I mean, that this is step one of a bigger change coming after the?
A potential change.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, you don't know.
No, but I'm just saying that if this?
So your concern is misinformation to businesses that have, a lot of them have testified when they learned of looking at signs and banners and flags anyway. And they may not be paying attention. So if, you know, help me, because I think what you're saying is, if some kind of action is taken, but it actually won't be taken tonight, because we're just in debate or deliberation, to get the word out to businesses that this is hypothetically a six-month sunset?
Step one.
Test one, and then it's still going to design standard? Is that, that's what you're looking for?
That's what I'm saying, because I don't?
Really to get it out there?
Yeah.
So they don't panic?
Right, because there was a lot of interest in what the signs are and specifically flags and the feather banners. And I just think that temperature then would go down if they understand that this is a two-step process, that if we do something with this, then we also have the other full sale. We're taking a big look at everything comprehensively.
Because we certainly have a bailing list, I'm looking at, Chandler, of occupational license tax permits. So we know where we could send a letter. And that would encompass every person doing business in?
That would be good outreach from the city out to the businesses on its own.
So now that's a recommendation for if something, you know, happens. Are you, the question on the table still is, do you want to take this up? And you've heard staff report now to deliberate through and then direct, part of the motion suggested would be to direct staff to bring back the ordinance April?
8th?
8th. So that's the question on the table right now, is do you want to deal with this and take some pressure off enforcement potential?
Yes, I do. Yeah, I'd like, I would like to see the businesses get some clearer direction on how feather banners can be used. I think it's important to them. And I thought Counsel Hinton's kind of compromise idea is sensible.
As a way to inform?
Right.
Yeah. So you want to go ahead and then deliberate tonight on these? Okay.
Well, did you have any, anybody sign up for public comment on this? Because it is a public hearing.
Well, we haven't started to deliberate yet, but, so that would be time for a question. Are there, is there anybody in the audience that would like to testify before counsel? I see and hear none. Anybody representing public agencies? Okay, and then for, okay. This would be then time to, motion to close the public hearing and record?
Mr. Mayor, I move to close the hearing in public record.
And a second for Mr. Hoagland, Counselor Hoagland? Take a, all those in favor of the motion to close with an aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed with an nay? Hearing none? Okay. Let's deliberate. You've got the staff report, you've got questions asked or raised.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
On page 12 of the packet, we talk about flag definition. You have version A and version B, which is, we'll say Portland. I don't know what, in version A, it says the length width of 1.0 to between 1.7, 1.9. Is that centimeters, inches? I'm unclear. So I'm sort of favoring the second B definition of flag as written by Portland.
The ratio was something Richard Townsend came up with, and it's just a ratio. It could be inches or centimeters or whatever. And I think it corresponds with what the typical US flag, state of Oregon flag looks like.
Would the, would the other definition suit as well?
The other definition, because of the three times as long as it is in any other dimension, kind of rules out as flags, feather banners. Because if it's, they're typically two feet wide and like eight or so feet tall. So obviously one dimension is more than three times the other.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
But if I'm understanding, if we, and I think it's question four, if we allow banners to be used as substitutes for flags, that definition, that whole proportion thing kind of goes out the window. It doesn't really matter, right?
Well, you're still saying you can have three flags or?
Or banners.
Two banners if, for substituting.
And I mean, okay, it's important to define, this is a flag, this is a banner. But in that sense, I understand that. But the ordinance we're looking at would allow one or the other. It wouldn't be banning feather banners.
That's right. Feather banners would be prohibited except when they're being substituted for flags. But if I?
So that raises the question, if I've never put flags up as a business before?
Yeah.
Hypothetically, I could have three.
Yes.
But I've never put them up. So if two banners show up, I'm clearly okay?
Yes.
So that would be the way? Two banners and one flag. I'd add to the clutter and raise a flag, huh? Just what we're trying to eliminate? Okay. Other questions? I don't, I did not understand, though I wrote it down. Mr. Hoagland, you brought up the time sequence. And Mr. Appicello, you talked about bringing back an ordinance to amend the 10 days to 30 days for taking down a sign?
If you look at the council communication?
Yes.
Where I talk about the changes that were made in ordinance 2018-13, and now I'm on page nine of the packet.
Right.
It says that toward the bottom of the page, that indentured section, temporary sign placed outside during a period of time, the real property is being marketed in good faith. If you see that, there's a mistake that Counselor Hinton found in exceeding. I fixed that. And then your planning department had recommended changing the sale that's completed to no longer for sale or lease, because some people just take it off the market. But right above the bold language, it says within 10 business days is when it needs to be removed. And what Counselor Hoagland was talking about is, oh, there's a local practice of, how many days?
30.
30. And I don't have any strong feelings one way or the other. It's up to you.
So then would be consistent. But we wouldn't have to bring back, I guess my question was, would we be bringing back another ordinance or would this ordinance take care of it?
Ordinance 15 with these two corrections is written. And if you want to make the change and give more than 10 days, then you just need to agree on that or not.
Okay. If we can go down these, I'm agreeing with Counselor Hoagland to be consistent with industry standard. If that seems appropriate, it'd be ourselves and then an association, two entities kind of creating the enforcement. So I would go with that. Anybody have an objection?
My question is that, is that industry standard or is that just what this group recommends?
It's the local Lincoln, it's the Lincoln County Board of Realtors.
So I'm asking, is it industry standard or is it just what the local group is recommending?
I don't know. I don't know if it's national or Lincoln County.
But I would certainly like to be having them on our side as far as enforcement. Does anybody have an objection to amending that to 30 days? I did have a question, Mr. Appicello, over on page 10 of the package. You know, we talked, under question one, we talked about temporary signs. And you, the greenout is a cross-out of two square feet to four square feet. But then I was remembering political signs are eight square feet.
Yes.
And they're also temporary signs.
Yes, but this temporary sign, the first one, the two-square-foot sign, you can have all year long. And so unlike the political time signs, which can only be within a certain?
60 days.
Yeah, the time period. And unlike the period of time when there's an authorized sale occurring where you can put out a sign that doesn't have to necessarily relate to the sale, what I'm proposing is getting rid of one of those time-limited exemptions and just giving you a larger all-the-time sign.
But I guess I was wondering about the square feet size of a for-sale sign, just out of whether that's four feet or eight feet.
I believe it's eight and in a residential zone and 32 in a commercial zone. Yeah, and that's on page 19.
So now I'm again lost then. So where did, so if, in this category, are we talking about? since we're not content, content oriented, but is there a, a for sale sign?
No.
Oh.
I, I think this, the first, the first one, the one that says crossed out two and underscore four.
Right.
That's simply the first exemption at any time. You can have a sign that says, I like beer, and put it on your property and it can be there all the time.
Anytime, all year.
Yeah, it's not time limited. It could say whatever you want it to say. It, it could say, I'm having a garage sale. It could say, you know, it's my wife's birthday. It could say anything you want it to say all year long. And right now, the allowance is two square feet. And that's consistent with the current code. One of the options I was offering you was to get rid of one of these time period signs and just up the square footage of the all the time sign. So if you, if you're going to have a garage sale, you can put out a four square foot sign that says, I'm having a garage sale. And then when your garage sale's over, you take it down and you put your sign back up that says, I like beer or whatever.
Okay. Okay.
I have a question. This is maybe me being too literal, but temporary signs allowed at any time, why would we call that a temporary sign?
Because it's not a sign that requires a building permit. The whole distinction of the 934 was to create option, regulation of signage that was not a land use regulation. Like Title 17 regulates, you know, building, things that need a building permit and zoning review and that kind of thing.
And, and just to clear this in my own mind, so the, the language it says in several of these ordinances, that there is no restriction on the content of such sign, that language is in 17 now? You're just trying to conform this other section?
No, 934 has that language. Subject to the, you know, standards and conditions, which of course say, you know, you can't violate state law. There are certain things you can't, you know, post even though you may want to. So there's, there are some restrictions, but, you know, it can't be illegal under state law.
So in looking at question one, if we can confirm, we're, we're clear on, on that one. Should council remove one of the temporary sign allowances in 9.34 in lieu of a larger property sign? Owner sign permitted at times? That's, that's the staff recommendation. Anybody have a, an issue with that one?
No.
Okay. Then going to question two, should council prohibit flying signs and inflatables except for the exception period, November through January for inflatables with a size limitation identified in chapter 9.34?
Well, this would authorize the kind of thing like the T and L septic sign during that period of time.
And does that include that, you, you've got the green shaded with a defining what a balloon? So we had, I can remember public comment on, can't even hang balloons on my kids' birthdays.
I remember that comment, and so I actually put in, there's a standard, kind of like if you want to order balloons, there's standard sizes. So when, if you look at somewhere, a normal balloon 14 inches in size or smaller is not considered an inflatable or flying sign. So we tried to get rid of that.
Okay. Any other, any questions on, in that area, inflatables?
Well, not to be too specific, but you mentioned the giant spider on the Goodwill building. Doesn't that go up on Halloween?
Oh, that's October, huh?
And, yeah, I, I couldn't solve every problem. And I, we have some real fans of the spider in the building. But I, unless you wanted to make a larger size for inflatables and also add other dates and, you know, apparently the Easter Bunny was affected and there were other, other things. But I, I just stuck with what we had. So, yeah. So no spider.
Counselor, this is where you could weigh in and.
I, I like the spider. I don't, I, I'd hate to cross up Goodwill on the.
They should have to apply like everything else. If it's, it's a, if it's an exempted thing, they should have to follow the same rules.
Right.
Sorry. They, they can apply for it.
So they could get a permit for it?
Yeah.
Well, not that big.
Well, then we're going to have to do some enforcement. I mean, that's, sorry. Thanks for the good work, but, you know, follow the rules.
Okay. All right. Question three. Should council define flags and place limitations on the exemption for flags permitted per business location or residence? By defining flags, there were the two, Portland or Townsend model. And that, so you'd do that first and then question four would get to the idea of limiting, right? Substitutes, yes. Do you have a preference on definition of a flag? Two, or the Portland one seems to be clearer as far as what is a banner anyway, if not what a flag is. Is that, that better to go with the Portland version?
Portland.
I hope media doesn't quote us on going anything Portland, but. That was a consensus. How about four then is, should council allow for a period of time to test? Feather banners may be successfully substituted for more traditional flags.
Yeah, I'm in favor of that.
Yeah.
I'm in favor with Councilor Hinton's.
Well, yeah, well, so this would be the six month sunset. But adding, if, if we agree to this, the educational or informative letter would go out to holders of the occupancy permit. So they would know that it's a two-step, we're not done yet. The, the provisions on flags and banners, definitions in a six month sunset and then to design review is going simultaneously. Right? Mr. Persons, Counselor? That's what you. So we, we're all right with that?
Could we go back and just add on the holiday thing? Just add two weeks around Halloween? Is that?
To capture Easter?
Yeah.
Is that, you wanted the Easter Bunny?
Capture Halloween.
Oh, Halloween. I thought the Easter Bunny was going to win out.
I think I'll vote for the Halloween thing too.
Do you want?
Favorite time of year.
Just say a timeframe around every holiday then.
I think it's the last quarter of the year.
Isn't it too big?
That's just your secular holiday.
That's right.
So if you went to October 20th, is that what you're suggesting? October 20th to January 10th?
That'd work for me.
But isn't it too big?
That's another question. It's huge.
With size.
It's more than seven and a half feet.
It would still need to meet the seven and a half feet size that was under the definition. So I don't know if it meets your intent.
You could have an inflatable wood tick.
What was the comment?
Oh, I said you could have an inflatable wood tick. Seven and a half feet. What's, what's, what can you do with seven and a half feet? That's a little more than me. Tall.
I'd ask the planning department to give me a recommendation. So Kate sent over a couple examples of inflatable type things and we went with seven and a half. Another option was nine and a half, but it's up to you.
So I think that the ray, a good question is raised. You can extend the time, but also in there is the size limitation as well. And that would defeat, both, given the size, would defeat your counselor desire to accommodate the existing spider.
So how did we come up with seven and a half feet?
Kate sent me some examples of, of inflatable balloon type and inflatable type signs. And I was just trying to find one that wasn't too big.
Can we get around that if we measure when it's not inflated?
How, how tall is the spider? It just says height. It didn't say how far it moves out, so.
Yeah.
I don't know how tall it is.
I don't know, seven and a half feet.
I have no idea. I have, don't ask me.
So what, what's your pleasure here?
I guess, I guess it seems like, you know, we have businesses around town doing these kind of delightful things that are sort of fun and why, why do we have to get in their way?
Or the government.
Okay, I got a question.
It's our job.
Hold that thought.
Is there a way to permit a larger inflatable for a short period of time?
I, I'm.
I'm just trying to work around with.
Is that a special permit?
If you give me direction to write some language, I'll, I can give you some options.
I, I do think this one would be a good one to bring with the design work.
It would be?
Yeah, I, I do think this needs to have a bigger community conversation.
So given that, that would mean six, with a six month sunset? Or is a six month sunset just the flags and banners?
Yeah, this, this section is actually a permanent change to facilitate the kind of things we're used to seeing, except the spider lost out given the size.
So, so is, is there a way, what I'm hearing is suggesting maybe pulling this out of this ordinance and?
Well, if, if we're talking about October, we've got time.
Oh, okay.
To tweak this. So while I could write some language, I think what Lindsay is saying is that exactly, you know, I could write something, but exactly what it should be is probably best left to design review. So we can revisit this.
So we could keep this suggested in.
And remember, this is not in Title 17. This is in chapter 934. It doesn't require going to the planning commission and all that other stuff.
Okay. So now we're back to dates. So if we can give, this is going to go to design anyway. Are you all right with the dates in November? We'd look at dates and size? So with that, we stay as suggested in number two, question two. We were the, I guess I didn't understand on, on package page 13, the windsocks. You're looking to define the windsocks? Is that?
No, windsock, I did add a definition of windsock. It's a fairly common definition. The way it is right now in the, in the ordinance is windsocks are just exempt. So you can, you can have a windsock and it's not regulated. Windsocks have gone from being simple things at airports showing you what the wind direction is to decorative and some of them have messages on them. So you can leave it in as an exemption. Then we just add it into the ordinance under the exemption section. Or you can leave it as proposed, which is everybody can have two windsocks, residential and commercial, just like the flags. Yeah, you could have two windsocks and three flags and you can substitute.
And a banner?
You could substitute two of the. You can substitute two of the flags.
I think we need to do by square footage per business rather than all these.
So thoughts?
Here's the thing. How many businesses are in town, right? And how many use flags? I mean, we're going, we're drilling down and drilling down and drilling down and drilling down and drilling down. Just because we're going to say you can have two feather flags does not mean everybody's going to crash into the side of the road because there's now feather banners everywhere. I think that you're trying to have this, and from what I remember, is you want a distractionless way to drive through town. I think we're trying to accommodate everybody with all of, with all of this and.
I know. Mine was sort of like a joke. But if you add the flags and the feather banners and now the windsocks.
How many windsocks do you see in town right now?
I have a 20-foot one. My house, honestly, she has a huge one.
I think the windsocks we mostly see over there by D River Wayside. I mean, they, they have a lot of windsocks out.
At the, at the kite place?
Yeah.
Selling them? So, I mean.
It's on, now, I don't know what that property, if that's their property, if that's ODOT's property, but.
I'm sure it's ODOT's property.
I'm just saying you see a lot of them right there.
And the windsocks, I, in, in this, in the actual regulation, it says they need to be securely attached to a structure or a pole. So the idea that you just go out and stick them out in a, like a yard sign, no, that's not what it is. They're supposed to be high enough off the ground and attached to a pole or the side of a building.
Okay. So do you want to go with the proposed green on page 13 of the flags, windsocks?
Yes.
That would. Any, any objection? Oh, yeah, then, then we have the sunset date comes in.
So do you want to allow for more time? So the sunset date was six months from the effective date of if we were to adopt this at the next meeting. So do you want to give it another month so we can have people be more aware of it or?
You could have the spider put up then.
It'll sunset right in the middle of the spider being.
Dang.
All right.
I think this is fine, especially with the letter.
Yeah, I think the letter informs and that, that's a good idea because it, it'll reach everybody. That way we know it, it reaches.
On question five. On question five, Lindsay had recommended that we would have to see how many non-conformities we would create if we actually did this. And it's not a 101 issue because they're prohibited on 101, but with the existing language. But we're talking about down in Taft. There could be, there could be encroachments on city streets in Taft. I, I can't for the life of me think of any, but I know Kate mentioned that she hadn't seen any applications to encroach in the entire time she'd been here. So it may not be a big deal, but the recommendation was to put it off for a design review.
Put number five off for a design review?
Yeah.
Okay. And that gives time to check out, make sure. Is that okay?
Yeah, I'm just, to be clear on that, in my mind, so is are we saying it would, it was okay to have a protrusion 24 inches into the right of way if it was eight feet above ground?
Yes.
And we want to take that away?
Well, that's the recommendation, but we're not talking about doing it now. We're talking about how many people will be left with a non-conformity if we did do that. So are there any of them out there, first of all?
Okay, but why, why, what is the objection? Because it seems like eight feet above grade is pretty high and do I care that something's sticking two feet over?
It's, it's just something that's not normally done without a license agreement or something. Do we have other sections of the city where we have people actually pay a license fee to encroach into the, the city right of way? So it's kind of like, it's, it's different than our current practice.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Does this include the signs that hang from the eve that's over the sidewalk in our downtown area? Would that?
Well, on, on 101, they, if they're in the right of way, they're not authorized because obviously this language excluded 101. But signs that protrude into the right of way could very well be a sign like, like you're talking about, so. And ODOT maybe has some rules about whether or not you're a non-conformity for their signs as well.
But at this point, we're, we're not taking action on that other than assigning it to the, specifically to the design review.
Yes.
And that would be, okay. Okay. So with that, then the, the motion would be to ask staff to bring back the ordinance so reflective?
Yep. Yep.
Motion to proceed, and then ordinance readings on April 8th, 2019. That. We had a motion by Counselor Parsons.
Second.
And a second by Counselor Casper. To move the. There's no dollars, so can't we just do a voice vote, or? So, all those approved, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? All right, see you April 8th.
Yes.
Could I call your attention to something?
You speak into the mic?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was moving it out of my way instead of in my way. I just wanted to ask you if we could consider moving something on the agenda up?
Oh, okay.
Yeah, she's here.
Why don't we then? I've got a request to move an agenda item. This would be over on K7, which is the Appointment for Public Arts Committee. If we could handle that now before the next public hearing, is there any objections? Seeing none? All right, why don't we do that? At this point, if you go to Appointment for Public Arts Committee. And that is K7. And is Deborah, oops, who's it come up, Deborah Hobbie? And as I recall, myself and Counselor Hinton interviewed Deborah. She's applied for the Public Arts Committee. Counselor Hinton and I interviewed her together, but yet separately, and found her very engaging and very knowledgeable in the art and heavy interest in the art arena. And found her would be a real good addition to the Public Arts Committee itself.
I would, I'd, thank you. I'd like to add to that, that we were having such a, I'll say, fun time speaking with her that we went on for a while. Anyway, so I would move to appoint Deborah Hobbie to the Public Arts Committee for, for city resident, positioned with a partial term expiring July 12, 2019. And thank her very much for doing this. Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion with a second to appoint Deborah Hobbie to the Public Arts Commission. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed with a nay, hearing none? Deborah is actually in the audience. Deborah, would, do you want to come up and let counsel meet you? You don't have to. And say a few words, put you on the spot?
Only if you want to.
Show us some art.
Yeah, it's your most recent project.
Since we've made you sit for an hour and a half?
I actually wanted to be anonymous. I just wanted to sit back there. I was hoping nobody would recognize me, actually. I should have worn my baseball cap or something. I'm grateful to be, to be accepted to the, to the committee. I've never served on something like this, and so it's going to be, I think, exciting. I'm a new resident to Lincoln City, and I'm looking forward to it as a way to help out, to serve, to be a part of something that I think is very important, and that it's, I feel honored to be, to be accepted to the committee. Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, as I recall our conversation, Counselor, the, we were engaged so much, one, Deborah is relatively new. I think it was September or August.
It's six months.
Yeah.
Six months today.
Today, and very active already. So, it was, it was fun visiting with a person that's new to Lincoln City and wanted to get engaged in something right away. So, I, I think that's what took our time, and we're, we're thrilled. So, unless anybody else has any questions, she didn't bring any art, or, though she is an artist as well.
A very minor one.
Still.
Just very, yes.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Yeah, thanks for volunteering and sitting through a city council meeting.
Oh, it's been interesting.
And welcome.
Actually, thank you.
All right. Why don't we then resume with one of those other exciting public hearings? If I can, this is a public hearing. It is now 7:37 PM. The public hearing for file number ZOA 2018-01 is now open. Two, oh, did I say two, 2019-01 is now open. This public hearing concerns a limited initiative proposal to amend Title 17 zoning in Chapter 17.42 Park Zone to amend Section 17.42.020, permitted uses. The ordinance will clarify the regulation of commercial activity, parentheses vending and other activities, unparentheses for park-zoned land. The ordinance also adds temporary emergency operation uses in the park zone. The Planning Commission held a public hearing on this matter on March 5th and forwarded a recommendation as outlined in the council communication. The city council's role in this legislative process is to consider the Planning Commission's recommendation, any written or oral testimony, as well as information from staff, and make a final decision as to the ordinance amendments or new ordinances. The city council may adopt the recommendations or may take other action, including declining to make any ordinance revisions. The council must take a few moments to cover supplementary matters and required statements. Does any member of the council wish to declare a conflict of interest in this matter? Hearing and seeing none? The substantive criteria that apply to this hearing include the statewide planning goals, the city's comprehensive plan, the applicable provisions of the city zoning ordinance. Comments and testimony should be directed to these criteria or to other criteria that you believe apply to the subject of this hearing. Before the staff presents a report, I would like to summarize the adopted public hearing procedures. The staff will present a report and respond to any questions. After that, any person may speak for up to three minutes. If council members have questions, your time responding to any questions will not be counted in your time limit. If you wish to speak, please write your name, mailing address, clearly on the sign-up sheet at the entrance. Please speak directly into the microphone and begin by stating your name only. If you also have written testimony to submit into the record, please provide a copy to the recorder. Will staff present its report?
Your Honor, Council, this is an ordinance amending 1742, the Park Zone. Essentially, this is the fourth ordinance associated with clarifying the special events, park concessions, basically, commercial activity in the, in the city, and this is specifics to parks. There's really three changes. One gets rid of the allowance to allow vendors to operate in parks under the Chapter 528 vendor, street vendor license. In order to operate in a park, you need a parks concession agreement along with an exclusive use permit, or you need to be there under a special event permit. That's, we adopted those three ordinances a couple of weeks back. This is to make everything consistent. This, even though it's a land use amendment, does not implicate any statewide planning goals, although our code requires, and I prepared findings, pretty much the major finding is it's really not implicating any statewide planning goals. So, I have prepared the ordinance. If you get past that tonight, we can go to the ordinance.
Are there any questions of staff regarding report, ordinance? Okay. Now is the time for the public comment and testimony. Anyone sign up or wish to make comment? Seeing none, hearing none? Is there any person in the audience who did not sign up but wishes to speak? Seeing none? Is there any comment from representative of public agencies? Seeing none? Is there any further comments? And if not, then the motion to close the public hearing and the record.
Mr. Mayor? I'd like to close the public record, sorry, and.
Public hearing and the record.
Second.
We have a motion and a second from Counselor Hinton. All those in favor of the motion to close, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, hearing none? Thank you very much. Deliberation, questions? Like, last meeting, we went through the three ordinances that this follows with. Any, any questions generated after that and regarding this? All right. With that, then, we can move to ordinance, ordinances on the agenda?
Your Honor, Council, this is first reading of ordinance 2019-13, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17 zoning, Chapter 1742 Park P-zone, Section 1742.020 permitted uses. Ask for approval of first reading.
There a motion?
I make a motion to approve first reading ordinance 2019-13, park permit uses.
Second.
We have a motion with a second from Counselor Parsons. All those in favor of the motion, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed with a nay? Hearing none?
Your Honor, Council, this is second reading of ordinance 2019-13, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln, I'm sorry, you're supposed to do a roll call.
Yeah, oh, I, yeah.
Sorry. Yeah.
Sorry, did, move it along.
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Your Honor, Council, this is second reading of ordinance 2019-13, an ordinance of the City of Lincoln City amending the Lincoln City Municipal Code Title 17 zoning, Chapter 1742 Park P-zone, Section 1742.020 permitted uses. Ask for a motion approving second reading and adopting the ordinance.
I move to approve second reading of ordinance number 2019-13.
Second.
And to adopt the ordinance?
Oh, and to adopt ordinance.
That ordinance.
2019-13.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please. Any discussion?
Anderson?
Yes.
Casper?
Yes.
Hinton?
Yes.
Hoagland?
Yes.
Coos?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
And Parsons?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Great.
Mr. Mayor, before we leave this, could I?
Yep.
Please just mention that in our packet associated with this was a document from the Planning Commission that spells out what their final recommendation is, and I really appreciate that.
Thank you. We can now go to special business, and we have the urban renewal areas feasibility studies.
Excuse? Sorry, you're not.
Okay, good, good evening, Mayor and Council. Okay, projector's warming up, and we've got a PowerPoint presentation that we'll give in just a moment. We're here tonight, the objectives of the meeting are to present you with some feasibility studies for the possible Rhodes End Villages Urban Renewal District and/or the possible Mel Scott Southeast 23rd Mixed Use Industrial Areas. We're here to answer questions about those possible new areas, and I have here with me this evening is Elaine Howard, our consultant urban renewal guru, and she helped us with our 2009 and 2014 substantial amendments to our existing urban renewal plan. So, just a brief background, July 24th, 2017, is when you all held a work session, a joint work session with the Urban Renewal Agency to talk about economic development tools, and one of those tools that you talked about was urban renewal areas. We continued also in 2017 to talk a little bit more specifically about urban renewal and new areas that might be possible. And then in 2016, you all requested a mobile tour of a few areas and went ahead and directed staff to do feasibility studies. Well, we have those two feasibility studies here as part of your packet tonight. Real quickly, what is urban renewal? Urban renewal is an economic development and funding tool available to cities and counties and authorized by State of Oregon laws, which is Chapter 457, if you're up at 3:00 AM and you want a good read, that's a great place to start. And that uses public investment to stimulate private investment. Its purpose is to help communities improve and redevelop areas which are deteriorated, unsafe, showing signs of economic or physical conditions that are detrimental to the community as a whole. And in addition, these areas can have deteriorated streets and utilities, or the areas may lack streets and utilities altogether. Oregon was the second state to authorize urban renewal. After an area or district is formed, the taxes are frozen within the area, and a portion of any increase in property value goes to fund those urban renewal projects. The plan, urban renewal plan, is what talks about what the projects can be. Taxes do not increase for properties in the district, but they are reallocated or shared with the other overlapping taxing districts for the duration of the district. And as you know, we have one existing district, which mostly goes along Highway 101, and it was formed in 1988 by the city council. After, after establishing the Urban Renewal Agency, I'm sorry, the Urban Renewal District, then the Urban Renewal Agency is the governing body of those activities. With our existing district, we did, 2017 was our final bond sale, which brought us up to our maximum indebtedness, or basically the cap of the money that we are allowed to collect in order to fund projects. And we will pay that final bond off by the year 2024. Let's see. We do have a report on all of the projects that the Urban Renewal Agency has completed in that district, and it's available online, or I'm happy to provide a copy or send a link to anyone if they're interested. I do want to make one correction about, in the staff report, I mentioned about if a new district were formed, that it would have to go into effect once the existing district expires, and that was not correct. I'm sorry for misstating that, but basically, the existing district still allows some excess acreage, so you could form a second district if you wanted to until, or at the same time as keeping the existing district. So, and Elaine will get into more detail about that with the PowerPoint. So, moving on, we have also some next steps for what we would do, and, and that starts with a review of the feasibility studies. So, Elaine?
Thank you. My name is Elaine Howard. I am the lead consultant on this project. I worked with Nick Popinuck of Tiberius Solutions. He does all of the financial analysis on any urban renewal plans or feasibility studies on which we work. on which we work jointly. I want to clarify one thing that Allison said, not particularly for you, but if anybody's watching on the television, about once an urban renewal area is established, taxes are frozen. What that means is, there's a frozen base established by the assessor's office, and the property taxes off of the assessed values at the time that an area is established continue going to all the taxing jurisdictions. They keep paying their taxes every year, just like any property, but that increased assessed value and the taxes off the increased assessed value go to the urban renewal agency. So, I don't want people to misconstrue that taxes actually get frozen, there's just a frozen base established, and that just means then taxes get divided differently from that time period. Okay, which button do I push to make it go down? Whoops. Uh, let's see. Just the right here. Sorry. Figuring out your system. So, Allison gave the background. I'll talk about the two different feasibility studies and what our consultant team recommendation was, and then just present you with some potential next steps. Allison went through this, which was your city council background on getting us to the point we're at now. This is an overview of the potential Nell Scott area, and I don't know, Allison, do you want to describe that better, or does it need to be? It just is at the south end of your city.
And mostly, well, pretty much all east of Highway 101.
We did two, we looked at two separate boundaries for the Nell Scott area. This was the Boundary A option, and it was 200 and, let's see, 172 acres, and then we looked at a second option that was much larger, 349 acres. On looking at this feasibility study, in the other feasibility study, you could establish one area and then add the additional acreage to that area. In this area, there are two separate considerations. You would either have this one or the second one, because the amount of acreage on the second boundary is too much to add to an existing urban renewal area. So if this was a boundary that you wanted to pursue, you would decide either this boundary or this boundary or some other iteration of boundaries if this was the option that you found that fit your goals the most. So, the way we do feasibility studies is we look at those boundaries and we do projections for what we think will be the maximum indebtedness within that area, so the total amount of money that you may spend in your urban renewal area. Allison referred to your original area has reached that maximum indebtedness in terms of that bond sale. And then we take that money, because that money's over time, and on this feasibility study, we did that for a 25-year period. We take that amount of money and reduce it back to what that money could be in 2019 dollars, because it's sometimes hard to think about, well, what does that really buy us in terms of projects if we're looking at a 25-year timeframe and we're looking at costs of projects in today's dollars? So for the Boundary Option A, which was the smaller Boundary Option, the project dollars in 2019 dollars is about 4.5 million. The maximum indebtedness, about 7.6 million. So this is a pretty humble, pretty small urban renewal area, pretty small amount for projects within an urban renewal area. However, I've done them with this amount of maximum indebtedness. I did one in Turner, and I said to their city council, this is a fairly small maximum indebtedness, and they said, yes, but it's more than what we have now, and this is what we want to do, and this is the amount of money we want to spend. So it really depends on what your appetite is for the amount of projects and what those project costs are. But in terms of that first Boundary Option, this one, the amount of money in 2019 dollars that you would have is about 4.5 million dollars. For the second Boundary Option, because it's a larger boundary, there's more existing assessed value within that area. For a 25-year timeframe, it's about 9.1 million dollars that you would have in 2019 dollars for projects. The types of projects that Allison fed me this information that you would want to do in the Boundary A option are infrastructure projects, water, sanitary sewer, storm projects to facilitate the development of the area, streets, potential park, creek restoration and culvert replacement, assistance with development of employment areas, and assistance with development, including light industrial, mixed-use commercial, and residential development, such as workforce, affordable housing. One of the key things about the Nell Scott area is this is one of your areas within the city, one of the few areas of the city, to establish a different type of job opportunities. So it's not a tourist destination area, it's an industrial area. So you would have a different kind of job base within this kind of an area if it were more fully developed. The projects for B would be redevelopment funding for those underdeveloped areas, and that's all that property that's more to the east of and south of the urban renewal area. You can see the big area to the south, it's totally undeveloped. And then the construction of a 2.5-mile alternative transportation route that has been talked about, I think it's in your planning Nell Scott refinement plan. It's also much more expensive than the amount of money that this urban renewal area could produce. So while this urban renewal area might be able to assist in some of that funding, it certainly wouldn't have enough money to pay for that full transportation alternative. The issues with this potential boundary is, some of that boundary area is not, right now, within your urban growth boundary. So you would have to do an urban growth boundary swap, that would have to be approved by the State of Oregon, to be able to pursue either of those options. There are also unincorporated properties within the area, so you would either have to get the county to also approve an urban renewal plan for this area, or you would have to annex those properties into the City of Portland. I have City of Portland, you were talking Portland earlier, you got it in my mind, into the City of Lincoln City. There are, at least looking at the other urban renewal area, there are low, and TIF means tax increment funds or tax increment financing projections, they're relatively humble for this area. You do have a lot of projects that you want to do, so you may say that that's okay and that's enough. Your Boundary A option is acceptable under the statutory limitations for acreage and assessed value limitations. Your Boundary B option requires removal of tax-exempt properties from the Year 2000 Plan. That is something that Allison has been diligently working on over the last few months, because we talked about that after we had our mobile tour, and we talked about what kinds of things we could do, and we decided we probably needed more boundary acreage than we would have under the existing limitations by statute, given the amount of acreage in the existing Year 2000 area. So we talked about removing from that Year 2000 area any tax-exempt properties, because they aren't bringing you in any value, but it will free up acreage to use in a different urban renewal area. Allison has gotten approval from the Bond Council, that that is something that they would agree to and allow to happen if you, as a city, decided you wanted to ask them to do that. So although that's an issue, it is something that we feel can be done, and have gotten input from Bond Council that it can. Any question on that before we proceed to the next one?
What tax-exempt properties are we talking about there, Boundary B? I mean, are those properties are getting a tax break now, and what happens there?
No, they're only publicly owned properties. We had a lot of, well, we got all the properties listed from the county, and then a few staff got around the table and looked at the map to figure out, we have to leave our boundary contiguous, so we couldn't take some away and leave some hanging. And then we also didn't want to remove something that's tax-exempt now if it has the potential to become taxable later. We also didn't want to remove properties that were tax-exempt that might still qualify for any of our economic development tools, like facade improvement loan, if someone needs to do new windows and siding and a roof. We wanted to still make sure that even though they're nonprofit and they're tax-exempt, that they would have that opportunity. So we really were looking at publicly owned properties, a lot of urban renewal or city-owned properties, state parks, for example, things like that, that we are pretty sure are going to remain in public ownership.
This would be properties within the existing urban renewal district.
Thank you. Could you, and tell me if we're, cover this later, but on Nell Scott, since these are like urban growth boundary swap or really expansion, is that, is expansion and swap the same?
They're different things.
Okay.
So Allison has also been working on this.
I've spoken with people at DLCD, Department of Land Conservation Development, to inquire about doing this. We haven't spoken with the property owners, so we don't yet know if, you know, how they would feel about either coming into the UGB or going out of the UGB. So that would be something we'd need to explore more if it's a direction you decide to do. So, yes, it's not typical that a boundary, urban growth boundary expansion is well-received. I think that there are some conversations, Elaine might know more about this, where a boundary expansion can happen if it's for workforce housing, and there's really no other place for a city to put workforce housing. I don't think that's the case for us, because our buildable lands inventory came back very positive. So this would really be in order to build a road. The Nell Scott Gap Neighborhood Plan talked about a road connection from 23rd going to the north to create an alternate route to Highway 101. So a UGB swap is what we had talked about doing in order to build that road. However, in those conversations with DLCD, we realized there's a separate set of criteria to build road outside of the urban growth boundary. So, again, we didn't want to invest more staff time and other department, DLCD staff time in figuring out what direction would need to happen until we knew if that was something you wanted to pursue.
I guess my question was more of a time element. If they were different, expansion versus a swap?
Oh.
You know, I'm trying to anticipate time to get one over the other, and then you enlightened with the swap, or there may not be a need for either, if you can build a road through anyway, right?
Right. I think you just have to promise you're not going to develop around the road, that it really is just a road.
But I think either of those are time-consuming processes. Doing either a swap, doing the swap even itself is, would take some time to do.
Well, that's what we talk about, though. Council meetings are time-consuming, so are we talking about more than a day?
(laughing).
I mean, more than a year?
I, I, I've never done one. I have worked with state agencies on other things and other processes, and I would say a year might be a comfortable timeframe to say it would take to happen.
Okay. Counselor?
I just have a question that I'm trying to understand. So, because there has been a lot of interest over a lot of years about building that road, that, and it's two and a half miles, not very long, but do you have any idea of what it costs? Because you said, I think that you said that Option B doesn't kind of come close to the expense?
I just want to clarify, so there are three roads. One is a road connection from 23rd to the north. That one is probably the least expensive, and I don't know how much that would be, but it's the shortest road. In the Nell Scott Gap Plan, the second road is what is known as Foothills Boulevard, and I believe the city applied for a federal grant to get some money for that, which was very competitive. And the Foothills Boulevard Road would be more expensive, I think, than the northern connection. And then the third road, which Elaine mentioned in Boundary B, the whole point of doing Boundary B is really to address what is a very old notion, well, 20-year-old notion, called the Lincoln City Byway, which would create an alternate route off of Highway 101 for through traffic to take around the southern half of Lincoln City. Now, the way that this area is drawn, you can see, it doesn't go as far south as Cutler City. The Lincoln City Byway would eventually plug into Cutler City. So even at this scale of an urban renewal district, it would not build the full capacity of the idea of the Lincoln City Byway.
I just, I'm just trying to figure out, then, do we, you know, do I can consider it, or just never mind? I mean, it just, I don't quite have enough...
So, when I get to recommendations, I'll deal with that a little bit, and then if you have more questions on it.
Okay.
But I think when I get to recommendations, I might answer part of that.
Okay. Thank you.
So, like, on this chart here, because that's one of my questions, the projections include, so the question is, is more than the 3% annual bump in assessed value included in these?
It is.
So that there's some kind of expectation in Year 6 through 10, anyway, that development has started occurring and it grows? Okay, that's why I want...
That's correct. And in the full feasibility study, it goes through those projections for development and gives what those assumptions were. But yes, it means it's more than just the 3%. It means that some of that vacant land actually gets developed.
Again, the other question, two other questions. One, you mentioned the 25-year timeframe, and I'm remembering our first district was 25 years, that got sunsetted, threatened, but we were able to then go some kind of provision where we could go to our dollar amount that we had declared. Is that not the case any longer, that...
We just used a 25-year term, because it's an average term of a new urban renewal area. So new urban renewal areas aren't limited by time, they're limited by that maximum indebtedness.
Okay.
So when your first area was established, they were limited by time.
Yeah.
And so when Measures 47, 50, and 5 were passed, urban renewal changed, and then maximum indebtedness became the limiting factor for urban renewal. So you could look at a different time period, it's just that a longer time period than that the taxing, the impact of taxing districts really don't want to see go longer than that, because that's a longer period of time that they're foregoing that increased value within the urban renewal area.
So then, my last question, and these are all consistent with, will be with Rhodes End as well, the other one, but is there a cost associated with forming a district with the funds, like this is what we say, four and a half million, eight, 8.5 million TIF, to farm, is there a ratio that, of underwriting and all the legal of putting a district together? Is it tied to dollar amount, or is it...
It's not tied to dollar amount.
Okay, so it's the same regardless of the size?
It is.
Okay.
It's tied to the number of hours that Nick's firm and my firm end up putting into, so we charge on an hourly basis, and, yeah.
And postage rates, you know, we have to do a mailer and...
Right, and, yeah, there's some administrative costs that are associated with it.
Thank you. Any other questions?
So this is the Rhodes End Villages area, so it's more to the north of your city, and we did do the mobile tour of this area. This is another aerial view of that. This is the map. In this boundary area, the boundary of this Rhodes End A is 368.48 acres. To be able to do that boundary, you would have to release those tax-exempt properties from your Year 2000 Plan. Boundary B... your Year 2000 plan. Boundary B adds in some additional tax lots, and you can see those by the hatch mark. Those are actually in your existing urban renewal area now, and so you can't have properties in two urban renewal areas at the same time. So you couldn't put those properties in this area until your other area was terminated. And then you could go ahead and put them in this area. And the acreage requirements are suitable, that you could add these boundaries to the existing area. So you could establish the existing area, and then when the Year 2000 plan terminates, you could add these in as a substantial amendment to that plan.
I was just curious, something that you said a couple minutes ago about removing, that you've talked with LCDC about removing some of, I think that's what you said about removing.
Two separate issues. There's a UGB issue, the urban growth boundary issue, and that's the Department of Land Conservation Development. And then the second issue is a tax, removing tax exempt properties, which is also an issue, and that's an issue with your bond council and bondholders. So two, two separate issues.
So that couldn't be removed?
These could be, the, this area could be established easily. We've gotten approval to remove those Year 2000 exempt properties. So you have the capacity, both acreage and assessed value capacity, to do this area within the next year if you wanted to. And then you have the capacity to add the additional properties here once your full plan, the full Year 2000 plan terminates.
And just to clarify, the state park there, and then the road, and then the city owned property, is that what that little tail is?
Yes, the little tail is in the existing area now. The state park property, while we could add it in this boundary now, it wouldn't be contiguous or connected to the rest of the area. And so even though the state park is not in the existing urban renewal boundary, we would have to add it later when we add in the connecting street that brings the properties as one big connected amoeba shape.
I see.
So, that, the state park is the only exception to what Elaine said about the other properties being in the existing district. And those properties, even though there's some road in there, which is public and not taxable property, there are properties in there that are taxable, which we do not want to remove until that bond is paid off because that is factoring into how quickly the bond is paid off.
Let's see. Okay, thanks. So, the boundary option A, maximum indebtedness is much higher, $90.7 million over 25 years, so dollars for projects in today's dollars of about 56.6. So a couple of things to think about there. Number one is, that's a lot of money. And if you started looking at that urban renewal area and your project list wasn't that high, you could make the term of the area shorter. So it doesn't have to be a 25-year term. But you may have a project list that that's high. But this just says what we believe, given development projections that we've worked with Allison and her staff on, we anticipate that the growth within this area could provide that really healthy maximum indebtedness for the area. The, there isn't a separate maximum indebtedness calculation. Remember, on the first one, we had two maximum indebtedness calculations because you had two discrete boundaries. If you added in that other area, your maximum indebtedness doesn't increase. So if you add in your properties from the Year 2000 plan in the State Parks area, it doesn't increase your maximum indebtedness or your capacity for projects because you're just amending your existing plan to add in additional acreage. So this amount of maximum indebtedness would remain the same with both boundaries for this area. The projects within this area are transportation neighborhood connectivity projects such as streets, curb, gutters, sidewalks, parking analysis and infrastructure improvements, infrastructure projects including upgrading water, sanitary sewer, stormlines that are approaching their expected lifespan or are lacking altogether, economic development opportunities for the villages at Cascade Head Commercial Area, improvements to city beach access points, parks, and open spaces. And then potential, I think that's projects for the whole boundary, the Rhodes End boundary. And then the issues in this one, the issues in this one are not nearly as difficult to overcome as they are in the other one. You just need to remove that acreage that you've already gotten approval to remove. If you're going to add in the Boundary B project area, you would need to terminate in 2024. Once that plan is terminated, you could add those in. And you have very robust TIF projections within this area. So you have projects that you want to do, you have money to be able to do them, you have the ability to form that area. So Allison said, well, what are your recommendations as a consultant team? And our recommendations would be, the Rhodes End boundary is something you can move ahead with now. There are projects that you know you want to do within your city, and it has the amount of money that you could do those with. So that is what we, as a consultant team, recommend. On the Nelscott area, once the Year 2000 development plan is terminated in 2024, you have the ability then to use that acreage that that urban renewal area is now controlling. So you have additional acreage capacity. So you could reevaluate that Nelscott area in 2024, once this, the Year 2000 area terminates. And then potentially, you could add in acreage there that already has existing assessed value that would help bring those tax increment projections up, that would allow you to do more projects within that area. So our recommendation is if, if you're interested in doing projects in the Rhodes End area, you, you have the capacity to move forward with that at this point where you don't with the other area. So your next steps and schedule is to determine whether this interests you, and it's something that you want to do, and which area you want to do it in. And is urban renewal an effective tool to do projects within those areas? And if yes, then to proceed with that urban renewal planning. What that planning typically does after the feasibility phase is, I know Allison told me there were some questions about, well, which tax lots exactly are in and which aren't. You then refine that boundary to make sure everybody takes a look at it, can look at what all tax lots are in and not in, to make sure everybody's comfortable with the boundary. You typically set up an advisory committee that is comprised of taxing jurisdictions that want to be, want to have input. The Fire District is a very typical taxing district that does want input. We like to have them on those committees. The county, a lot of times, wants to have input, the schools. So you have them on a committee, but you also have neighborhood people and business people, developers, on an advisory committee. They usually meet three times to talk about boundary projects and to go over financial projections. This has to go to the agency to review a draft plan and report. If they like that and they want to move forward, they send it out for formal public review. That includes taking it to your planning commission for review of conformance to your comprehensive plan. You have to give a briefing to the county. They do not vote on it, but you have to give them a formal briefing. And then you take it to city council, to a hearing that's advertised citywide, and it's a non-emergency ordinance that goes into effect 30 days after it's voted on. So that's the process if you decide you wanted to go ahead.
Is there, I didn't hear you mention going to other taxing districts?
After the agency meeting, you're required to send what's called a formal consult and confer letter to the taxing jurisdictions. So you send them the draft plan and report. The reason you wait to send that formal document is the agency approves that document, or says we're comfortable with the assumptions in this document. You do ask taxing districts if they want to be involved in that advisory committee, so it's not a surprise to them when they get that formal document. They've already provided input in your process as you're moving along.
And I guess the other question I have is, is the state, in its wisdom, somehow jumping into this arena? And should we be anticipating legislation that?
There is some legislation that's been introduced. I have been working on the committee. I think Allison has been briefed on it.
Yes, listening in.
We've worked over the past, I guess, two years with the Special Districts Association and Fire Districts on legislation. There will be some changes. There are changes in, the biggest change, I think, is something that the Special Districts and Fire Districts requested, which is to make it so that if you have a public building project, so building a city hall, or building a police station, the approval for that project, not the whole plan, but for that project, has to be from three of the top four taxing jurisdictions within your locality. So that's the biggest change. I support that change. I helped negotiate that change. It's been, over the past 14 years that I've worked in urban renewal, that's the biggest problem that we generally have, is cities spending urban renewal agency to do, agency monies to do that. There are other kind of minor changes that just clean up other problems that we, as consultants, have identified where we say, you know, nobody understands this, let's make it more clear.
Okay. So nothing really detrimental, or do they?
Correct.
Okay, that's.
Unless you're planning on building a new city hall, then, then that's detrimental. But you're not.
Counselor hint is, but, you know.
But, you know.
Can build it, but just not with urban renewal money.
Fine. I'll have a bake sale.
Other questions?
I do have a real question, which is, and I think I know the answer to this, but when it comes to selling, you know, doing the bond, do you do it in increments over the years? I think that's what we did with the past one. So it's not everything all at once. It's.
Right.
And it's like a list of projects that determine that amount, or am I understanding that right?
It's both a list of projects and your financial capacity, how much money you're actually getting in, and how much, how big of a bond you can float with that amount of income that you're bringing in.
Other questions from counselors?
I'm just, you know, learning the process here, and obviously, the Rhodes End is much more bang for the, for the buck and much more productive. But I was just wondering if, is it possible that the Rhodes End area would be more likely to develop on its own through market forces, but the Nelscott Gap would need more help from an urban renewal area? I don't know if that's even a legitimate question, but, you know what I'm saying?
That's a great question. Yes, although, you know, most of that area is residential, and most of the, so the undeveloped property is mostly in the Villages at Cascade Head, rather than in the Rhodes End community. And so it is tougher to, it's tougher to fund public works, infrastructure projects without having a lot of redevelopment that would require it. So that's just kind of an off-the-cuff answer. Yes, I think you're right. And then Nelscott area being mostly in the county, I think that, in general, the county supports redevelopment, but doesn't, I think local capacity for funding to encourage redevelopment is greater. You know, it's, I think there has to be a need for putting in public infrastructure, and there hasn't been a need there yet. So I think you're right. But it just depends on whether or not you see urban renewal as being a necessary tool to do those projects at a pace that's typically faster than what the typical taxing allocation would do. Did I?
Yeah, I think that's right. And I think the Nelscott area, it may be premature to do that area now because of the hurdles, the UGB swap, the fact that there are properties that are unincorporated. I don't see the development pressure saying that's going to develop now. So it may be, you know, this is 2019, in five more years, maybe that's a more appropriate time to relook at that area and say, okay, I think now is the time to move forward with that area and consider it. I do think it's going to need help to develop.
Mr. Chandler?
Is there anything that prevents us with doing a UGB swap and annexation and all of that stuff now in preparation for this?
Absolutely not. You can, you can proceed with that while, if you decided to go ahead with Rhodes End and adopted that, you know that in 2024, you're going to free up existing capacity. So yes, then you would start thinking about, what do we do to get that area ready?
I see the attraction, the thing that jumped out at me in your explanation was that Nelscott could be an area for light industrial, or, you know, to bring employers. And that's, how else do we do that? You know, so that's.
And counselor, that's actually where I'm kind of leaning and have a quandary. I'm not surprised at the recommendation at all because of time and money. And, but a couple things that run through my mind is, we're just finishing up on a district that took a lot of time, more than the 25 years. And I think if I'm not mistaken, we were the second urban renewal district in the state, or one of the.
You were one of the early ones, yes.
One of the real early ones. So we've learned a lot. And I don't want to think, think that our citizens or taxpayers suffered, but I'm thinking of the other taxing districts where we diverted funds to our benefit. I'm not sure they got their bang for the buck. At least what they were anticipating or promised lightly, that huge development and extra dollars would come in at the end. So that, given that, I'm, I'm a little concerned about a Rhodes End with umpteen million dollars of diversion of taxes to our school districts, Fire, and the city, and all that, since, to me, we've not proven ourselves very well with our first. Because the Rhodes End one, for me, feels, again, like infrastructure in residential or, and not fluff stuff, because it, you know, it's heavy, as you mentioned, heavy residential. But, you know, we own the land up there. We've already taken steps to develop that area, the villages and stuff, and of using the land for that subsidy or catalyst to develop. Versus, when I look at 23rd Street, Nelscott, it has the potential of jobs, light industrial jobs, higher wage jobs, all the kind of stuff. And, you know, if we don't do it, I don't know who will. And I recognize the dollars are a lot less, but I'm also recognizing that's, you know, maybe what it takes then to partner, you know. So now we've got some funds to partner with landowners. Because there already has been property moved in that area, recently sold, and dreams are building. It lacks sewer, it lacks, you know, good water, power, all the things that would make it. So I'm, you know, I'm, I would almost go the Nelscott first. And, you know, then as the existing district fades away, but I guess we can't, it's going to take four years anyway to get the Nelscott one ready, is my, is my bet. So, you know, we'd have it, and we can reevaluate. We will have had time then to develop the villages. So we can always come back to the Rhodes End Villages, that, that area. I'm just hesitant to not take advantage of this time, you know, to help push an area that is, I don't know if it's ripe for development, but it's sitting there in the county, ready to be annexed, ready to be developed, the economy's good, and it just lacks all the basics. And if we don't do it, I don't know who will. And the road is a, a big component. And so that, that was kind of. And so, that was kind of going through as I'm trying to weigh these two. I am real concerned about the other taxing districts, and in light of, you know, budget, certainly not lack of revenue, but budget allocation, that they would suffer.
I do think you're underleaving in your existing area, so you're, you are sharing back with all the taxing districts, and that's something that you committed to do in your 2017 amendment. Another consideration for you might be if you, if there were some very key projects up in the Rhodes End area, that maybe added up to 20 million dollars in today's dollars, and you said, you know what, we have the potential of doing these really key projects up here, you could look at an urban renewal area up there that would be a much shorter duration, and go ahead and address those key problems while you're waiting for the other things to happen within your year 2000 plan, to be able to terminate it and pay off all your debt to start up the other area. Or you could just say Rhodes End can survive on their own, we're not going to worry about that, and we're just going to spend our time thinking about the Nell Scott area and getting it ready.
Well, again, I don't know where, and it's a good idea to look at projects, but my reaction on Rhodes End is, once you start, because it's old infrastructure, and you talk about sewer and water and streets, and I don't know where you stop. So, I don't think there's anything light there, and I feel that sense. And that's where I'm, as I was making my margin notes, I was, again, just trying to look at the overall impact, economic impact, potential lies in Nell Scott. Rhodes End is developed already, and villages, we're on the road there, with land we own and free and clear, so I'm wrestling with it.
So I'm going to take you back here. Let's say you waited until your existing area is done, and you did the biggest area that we looked at for the Nell Scott. So these are 2019 dollars, so they're off some because it would be 2024, but you would have about 9 million dollars worth, but in the first five years, you'd have about 1.6 million dollars. So, the other thing that you could look at as you're thinking, you know, if that's what everybody thinks is, okay, our most amount of money comes, and this is true in most urban renewal areas, it comes later in the urban renewal area, so it comes in years 11 through 25. So, just looking at the projects that you need to make happen within that urban renewal area to cause development to happen, you're out there five plus 10, 15 years.
Right.
Basically.
And it'd be 20 if we don't get started. So, that's where I'm wrestling, where you've hit it. Counselor?
But I think, if I recall, you said that as soon as, in the interim, between now, and this is what might be helpful, is that in the interim between now and when 2024 hits, that we can start doing annexation and swapping and all of that other thing, that we wouldn't have to wait.
Right.
And then it would be ready.
Right.
If that's what we choose.
And then at that point, I would also recommend that you probably look at an even bigger boundary for that area, to try to get that 9.1 million dollars up, because that's not going to buy you a lot of projects to do within the area.
However, if I can, just to follow up your question, you pointed out, mine would be by this, though, it takes time for the pot to grow.
Yes.
So, doing, you know, unless you form the district early, you know, you're just delaying the pot growing.
Remember, this one was the one...
I'm trying to figure out the timing.
Oh, no. This one's the one where it's either or. So you either form this district, which is small, or you form this district, because you don't have the capacity acreage-wise to form the second one until your other plan terminates.
Even with the tax removed? Okay, so this is an option until '24, sort of, for example. Okay.
But we could get ready for it.
Yeah.
You can get ready for it. So the one that is an option, that you could, you know, if you decided you wanted to do now, is this one, and then this has about 4.5 million dollars of capacity over 25 years. And again, you can see that, that's the years 11 through 25, where you actually get enough money to do something.
So could you go back to Plan B of Nell Scott, and the acreage that has? How much of Rhodes End, can you do the entire Rhodes End and Nell Scott? Say, 2024, can you have Rhodes End up and Nell Scott? Is there enough acreage available?
I didn't put in my chart, I put the acreage allowed from the year 2000. Do you know how much is in your year 2000 area?
18%.
I don't. Yeah, I'm sorry, I don't. Once, you can't do both of, you can't do the Nell Scott and the Rhodes End A. Is that what you're asking? Now? Rephrase your question.
Well, I wonder if, I was just looking to have them both on the book. So, after 2024?
Then I think you could.
Then is there enough to have A and B?
Yes, yes.
B of Nell Scott, A of Rhodes End.
Right, and that's what our recommendation was, I mean, it's absent thinking about the jobs and the city policies, it's just saying capacity-wise, is that if you did Rhodes End A, or Rhodes End A and B, and then in 2024, you could add the Nell Scott. You would have to wait till 2024 to add the bigger Nell Scott anyway.
Right. Okay. And I guess if we got a list, really took a look at the key projects in Rhodes End, and what that amounted to, that might drive either a different district or the actual dollar amounts that we needed. Thus, I'm still worried about a combination of the two impacting other districts at this...
I mean, what will happen when the existing district goes on the property tax rule, is all of that assessed value growth will be redistributed to the taxing districts. So they'll, at that point, get that bump in their property taxes.
Yeah. They've been gotten, what are we, at 80% now, or 80 going back to?
Urban renewal collects 20%.
Yeah, so 80% is already going back, but 20% is still...
Yeah, they're getting quite a bit of that back.
Back, yeah.
So I was...
Oh, please.
Hey, there's some of us over here, too. No, I was just thinking, asking the same question, actually, about different kinds of projects. I can envision the projects in the villages, because that's kind of an open book, we can, you know, the Rhodes End, and, you know, everything's kind of ready to go, except that it's not ready to go, or we, you know, so I can see what that is. I can almost kind of understand what would happen, like in the commercial area up there. And I'm trying to think, for the Rhodes End area, then, that would be replacing very old pipes. I'm just trying to think of some projects that you were asking about, and I was thinking about that, too. And I think we already did the pump station, one of the pump stations, anyway, in Rhodes End, and there's also the dire need for some safe pedestrian way to walk along Logan Road. It was so busy this weekend, as you would imagine, it was a beautiful weekend, and the beginning of the week off for kids, it was jam-packed, there are people parked wherever there could be. It's not a safe environment. So I'm just assuming that that kind of thing is one of the things, there's some stormwater issues in the area that need to be addressed, and so is that the type of project that...
Yes, and the...
Getting ready for housing, and, I mean, I...
Yes. So, as you know, our existing district has a very wide bandwidth of projects that can be, the funds can build, so we would be looking at similar types of projects as what we've done in the existing new, existing urban renewal area. And then, basically, through community input and this advisory committee that Elaine mentioned, we'd be refining that list, and then, you know, you could decide, do you want to be super-specific, like underwire underground utilities from ebb to tide, or do you want to underground utilities in all places? So, maybe I picked the wrong analogy, but...
Oh, it's perfect. It's perfect.
Yeah, you know, build parks, or build a park here, and that, of course, those different project types will mean different costs.
So, I don't know if we're ready to make, I don't know if I'm ready to make a decision tonight, but maybe Council is. Is your expectation, following this list, would be, we need to decide which one, or the sequence of, or our next step, as you outlined to us? Council, any thoughts? Some of the councilors, you know, it's all new, anyway, and weren't even involved, so that's also why I hate to rush something when three or four of the others have...
Well, I will say, the Rhodes End, the prospect of accelerating growth in Rhodes End is really exciting, and especially if there's a workforce housing component to that that's significant. I think, I think the impact would be impressive.
I guess I would want to see, and I'm hoping would want to see, the projects. If somehow we could flush out, because it just feels to me like the Rhodes End, and it's broader than Rhodes End, so I hate just saying Rhodes End, feels like more of the same that we've been doing, a lot of infrastructure, a lot of hope, where Nell Scott is light industrial. There's something about, something we don't have, of trying to encourage it, invite it, whatever, that, you know, still, you know, I sense, anyway, a need to, you know, show the citizens that an urban renewal, urban renewal area can be something different and prosper from more Highway 101 of undergrounding wires, which is great, but not, you know, not the job-creating kind of thing. That's what I'm struggling with.
I just, I've just had this thought. Could you go back to Nell Scott with, when the funding would be available?
As it rolls in?
Well, I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to picture what you see, which is in the plan, I think, but I don't know how, what you can do with those dollars. So, years one through five, you get a million and a half, plus some change, and so what, can you build a road with that? I mean...
Not much of one, yeah.
I'm just, what I'm, anyway, it's just...
My answer to that would be, but you can do sewer and water, you know, and get that, you know, that place is all septic now.
Yeah, well, don't you...
So, to me, you start, you know, showing an interest, because roads, as we've talked about many times, cities don't build roads, but maybe, you know, you partner with the developer, the landowners, because they're the ones who are going to benefit from the road. And the same thing with sewer and water, but, you know, for me, I'd be looking for amenities into there that would attract bigger business and light industrial jobs. So I'm wrestling with the same thing, it's not enough to do anything, but, I don't know, like I say, you have often asked, when we looked at the Nell Scott Gap plan, what's the next step? Now you have a plan and a map, how do you jump-start it? And to me, you know, I think it's our responsibility to jump-start it, so I'm looking for a way to jump-start.
Well, I just think that now, this interim time, if we go with the villages, Rhodes End area, that between here and 2014, when we can jump into...
And that may be...
...the going, that we can do all that foundational work, not foundation like in pipes and stuff, but we can do the land, all the detail, the I dotting, you know, kind of get it ready, because it's not ready yet.
That may be.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
You know, you talk about all this building, we also have to consider that we're going to be building houses, there'll be construction going on, there'll be construction going on if we do urban renewal up in Rhodes End, or four years we'll be constructing in Nell Scott, which I think, I agree with you, is ideal. It's time to develop and put in sewer and water, but there's going to be a lot of building going on. So will we have enough workforce and materials and supplies to do all this building at the same time? And how do you, how do you time that? But I'm in favor of looking at Nell Scott, I think it's timely.
It's time. I mean, it's time to push and broaden our shoulders and not just go in line, you know what I mean? To have the possibility of that byway, to increase the, you know, that area, you know, we've seen the development, we've paid for that, I forget the name, the, you know, where they draw what it would look like, you know? We've done that already. I'm sorry?
The design work?
The design work of what the neighborhoods would look like, how they would look like, where the shops would be, how they would come in, you know, how it would look, how far up it would go, and, yes, of course, it's going to take time, that we're going to have to talk and do these things, and it's going to take time, and we'll still be able to do more, and we're not going to neglect or avoid doing things in other areas of town as well. But, the purpose of UGB, the urban renewal, is to kind of juice what's going on, and any kind of that is going to benefit that either way. And can we still do the really necessities of Rhodes End area? Can we get those within our normal activities and use the urban renewal to juice this over here at the same time, so that both areas that are the most concerned can have things going forward, you know? I'm all in favor of this 23rd Street, and the larger of the two, and then in 2024, we do something else, but, I mean, looking at what, what does the city need, you know, we're going to be developing the north already, you know, we know that, but we're not pushing east at all, and it would be good. We're going to grow, we're going to gain more, you know, jobs and all that stuff, and that's going to bring more people here, I mean, that, which is what we care about, anyway, you know, so, but it rains all the time.
Counselor Parsons, you were...
I'm just battling myself over here.
I guess, and I agree with all the comments made, I guess my question is, do you want to take a week, two weeks, to either talk to staff, talk to Allison, kind of get yourself around the, you know, the reports that you were provided, and a lot of reading for, over the weekend? Yeah.
Between Nell Scott A and B, the difference was, B, we have a lot of legwork to do, and A, we can start...
Both, both of them you do.
Okay.
I think the legwork for A and B is the same. The difference between A and B would be projects list, and then also that we couldn't do B until 2024, because we don't have enough acreage. Is that right, Elaine?
Is that right, Elaine?
That's correct. And you can't form this one and then add to it the other part. So if you're really interested in doing the big area, you can't do that really till 2024.
So really the...
You could get ready to do it. You know, you could do, work on the UGB swap and you could work on the annexation issues and you could identify the projects and the costs and look for other funding in preparation. But this boundary you can't do until 2024 when the other one terminates.
It's A or B.
That's correct.
So really the decision's kind of...
Other question I had, so just from driving up and down the highway, A looks to me like it has more potential to attract industrial growth, but it also generates much less tax revenue.
Yes.
I like the idea of using, you had thrown out $20 million of the Rhodes End funding to get some preliminary work done and then doing the preliminary UGB swap, whatever needs to be done that we can, the sort of work that we can do without creating the urban renewal in Nell Scott and getting started on those aspects and getting a chunk of work done in Rhodes End and generating those projects and then like five years down the line, see what we can do next.
But you can't use the money generated from the urban renewal boundary in Rhodes End to prep, prepare Nell Scott. You can't do that.
No, but we're talking about things that aren't really high revenue, costly preparatory projects. We're not talking about infrastructure, we're talking about land swaps.
Right. I think the councilor's saying if you formed an urban renewal area in Nell Scott that was much smaller appetite, so maybe instead of $56 million in 2019, you had 20 million. You prioritize your projects and said, what are the most important projects here? Let's do that, but a much shorter time period. Go ahead and do that now because you have the capacity. But at the same time, so you do that, and then at the same time, staff is working to prepare the Nell Scott to resolve issues so that when the other area terminates, you could do that. Is that correct?
Yeah. And also, I, this is maybe behind the sky, but it's possible that we get a federal grant for Foothills Boulevard. And if that work can start, then suddenly that area is much more accessible and attractive and all that. I don't know if that, I don't know if we can really count on that, but...
So I guess that was the question that I, I didn't, as I looked at Rhodes End and talked about projects, I don't know where you'd stop and start or stop. So is that a task we could ask Allison and Mr. Chandler to take a look at and, and see if there was a smaller Rhodes End type UGB that makes, or U...
URA?
URA.
I'm confusing their whole...
URD.
UARD. That we could maybe start with, that isn't so overpowering for staff also, so that we can also be pushing Nell Scott. I think, Counselor, your, your point was that are, you, not high end, but higher impact projects in the Rhodes End villages plan.
Especially if there's a housing, if, if, I think that's a, that's a more immediate way of easing our housing issue. And if you have more housing, it, the area, the entire city becomes more attractive to these employers that we're hoping to attract with the light industrial.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
That chicken egg thing.
It is.
There is, I'm not quite sure how you, you know, I don't know that our issue is infrastructure is getting in the way of the housing need. But, you know, I'm, I'm interested in a shorter list and seeing what projects.
So let's think about this and come back next council.
Is that all right? Ron, is time wise, you know, this wouldn't be a, a list that we're holding anybody to, but trying to get an idea if it, if there's some kind of feasibility that this makes sense to make a smaller Rhodes End.
Some of the ideas on capital improvements for Rhodes End have already been developed at, through the Public Work Staff. I don't know if they're comprehensive, but we do have some, some that are already there. I'm not as familiar with projects that would be needed up northeast, or southeast 23rd, but we can certainly put our heads together and see what we can come up with.
Well, I would just be, I think we're all just saying of Rhodes End only at this point. So just some kind of, you know...
And what we can do on the, the projects is see if there's a possibility to group them so that you can see the areas where they might be affected to see if you can shrink the size of the, of the area.
If I could understand your question, are you talking about geographically shrinking the area or are you talking about restricting the maximum indebtedness so that the district has fewer projects to accomplish?
And lasts a shorter time therefore.
Well, I think I would take your advice as we, I'm sensing there's a, a desire to move Nell Scott, that we, we have an obligation to Nell Scott and want to get that, but, but willing to somehow use, better utilize these next four years. And I, quite frankly, I'm personally afraid if we, once we start Rhodes End, that's going to be it for 25 years. It'll be hard to pull off into a, a Nell Scott because there'll be a lot of activities, a lot of projects. So what I'm hearing is if we looked at and identified, to use Counselor Mark's analogy, $20 million worth of projects and so we could still have the same geographic area, but maybe goes, or shrink the geography as well, I don't know, I don't know what, which hurts more or less.
Let me ask another question that I think that's related to what the mayor is talking about. If, can Rhodes End be broken up into more than one group and so that you've got a smaller group going, Nell Scott, and then a later time you add a second Rhodes End area? Is that a possibility?
That's a possibility. The other, the other thing is if you, look at this chart, if you kept that same area that we looked at, so this is boundary option A, and you looked at a 20-year, I mean, a 10-year timeframe, that's about 18.7. So maybe it's an 11-year timeframe for an urban renewal area would get you about $20 million of projects. So it's a much shorter time period. You, I mean, that, that assumes growth happens within the area on the projections, but that, that's a way to constrain and not impact all the taxing districts as much. It's a way to say, well, we're going to do fewer projects so staff isn't totally involved in that. And, and then that would allow you to say, okay, five years down the line, all of the year 2000 goes back on the property tax rolls and we can then look at Nell Scott as 2024. As you're getting ready for that, you're dealing with the UGB issues and the annexation issues and those other issues. So there's two ways to do that 20 million. It's keep this whole boundary or you figure out how to reduce the boundary, but then that will lengthen the term.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So one of, if, if I understand the concern, some of that is the staffing time that will be required for one or both of these. One of the assignments you gave to me as part of our priorities is to come back with a time analysis whenever there was a project that is being proposed. So including a list of projects, we can also come back with a more detailed steps and timeframe associated with creating urban renewal districts, expanding or swapping UGB areas, and so we can give you a sense of what that actually means. And how taxed Allison will be in trying to get all of these done.
Keep, keep in mind that the, the pace of the projects for urban renewal is not everything at one time. I mean, you've seen our existing district happen since 1988 and for the first 10 years we didn't do much, maybe a sidewalk here or a water line there, which all those projects, I think, were administered through Public Work Staff. So where they found they needed some money for a project, that's how they utilized the urban renewal pot of money. It wasn't until 99 that we really kicked things off with the Taft Community Vision in order to establish, you know, here's our full district, here's all we can do, what are we going to do just in this area? So in a way, these two plans are kind of more like a Pearl Plan where, you know, the district is more cohesive and concentrated to address things in one area rather than kind of sprawled out along the highway where we did have to do individual community vision plans so that we had more input about, you know, what the different parts of town were wanting.
And haven't we already in essence done with the Nell Scott Gap Plan? Done the visioning and stuff for Nell Scott?
Yes, we, we definitely wouldn't need to do as much in that regard. We'd still need to talk with our businesses. We want to make sure that we wouldn't exclude businesses and that they'd be given every opportunity to expand or redevelop however they want. And then talk about other jobs and, and obviously there's mixed use housing and workforce housing that are part of that plan.
Well, could, could we defer a decision and have Ron bring back some more information? If, if that's all right? And I'd encourage councilors to certainly ask questions of staff, all staff. Is that, is that all right?
We do also have our fire chief here, if you would like. I don't know if he would like to say anything or not.
I was trying to protect his money for him, you know, it's...
Sure.
Come on up.
If you'd like.
Rob Dalmont, Fire Chief, Foot North Lincoln Fire and Rescue. I very much appreciate your concern over other taxing districts. The Rhodes End Plan basically freezes 11% of the fire district's tax base for the duration. And we don't know right now what the financial impact of that will be. That's something that Allison and Elaine will work on for us, but it can be significant. And it doesn't just worry about services in that area, but it impacts our entire district and how we, how we distribute those services as it comes through. So I do appreciate that. I think the main reason I'm here tonight is just to get educated on the subject and to have a seat at the table when these discussions take place so that we're not left out. That's really about all I've got to say.
Well, that's good. And that's helpful.
It is a big project. Rhodes End is a big project. I do not dispute the need for the improvements to go on, and I think our district fully supports urban renewal as it moves forward. I know that previously in the other projects that have occurred through, through the town, it's really helped. And I think that, I know that previous Chief Don Baker, he had a little bit of anxiety when urban renewal was brought forth, and I know he sat in front of this group several times talking about urban renewal and the impacts it had on, on our district at that time. So anyway, I'm just here for the education and to make sure that as, as we move forward, that we get to sit down and talk about the things.
Chief, I, I will let you know, to previous Chief Baker's credit, he's the only taxing district that knew when the money was coming back to him. Everybody else was, everybody else, including the school district, was surprised and grateful, but the chief was waiting for it. I could tell you.
I think he knew exactly.
Great. Thank you. Thanks very much. And you will be included, so. And thank you for sitting through this, but it is a good education. You know, it's a, a great tool for the city certainly and for the, the community, but we've got to use it wisely and, and right. So, thank you. Thanks for what you and the crew are doing. All right. Can we leave that subject and go to some old toolbox, economic toolbox discussion that Counselor Hoagland missed, you know, for being tardy from another agency?
You're welcome.
Expect a lot of questions from him.
Yeah. Don't anybody tell him the answers to the questions.
I'll get 100% right.
So Allison, go ahead. And I hope we can let the audience and those who are watching recognize that we've had a lot of this discussion in Urban Renewal Agency just prior to this meeting, so.
Yes, thank you. So I won't repeat too much, just remind everyone that the reason we're here to talk about the Economic Development Toolbox tonight is, as you mentioned, we, we talked about creating more tools for the Urban Renewal Agency Toolbox. And now here we are, you've changed hats for the Economic Development Toolbox on the city side, basically which would mean that the funds would not be restricted to capital, although, you know, that's up to you. And then the, the funds would not be restricted to properties located within the urban renewal district boundary. So these tools could be applied to whomever is located within the city limits. Let's see, so you asked that we talk about expanding the toolbox on the city side. As people are probably well aware, the Urban Renewal Agency has a few tools already. Facade Improvement Loan, Energy Efficiency Loan, Business Expansion Loan, and a couple of other programs that help with our Small Business Development Center and also the Bay Area Merchants Association for a Downtown Manager as a pilot project. There are some tools that are in the toolbox. The toolbox is basically a list of ideas, which is in your packet, and that list, any of those can be moved forward. And some of them are, I've put in your staff report, you could move those tools forward into the toolbox with any specific focus, whether it be to assist with the public properties that we are partnered on developing, or also to include focused tools to emphasize workforce or missing middle housing. Or you could even think of another tool that may not be on the list. The list was basically established a few years ago and we talked to regional economic development experts. We also had some interviews and some surveys and conversations with the Small Business Development Center kind of focus group discussions and then also through the Chamber of Commerce. And that is how we arrived at the big toolbox, which is in the packet. In terms of budget, right now the city has budgeted $100,000 for economic development tools, which you have not yet created. And so that's what we are here to do and talk about. And then if you did want other tools that weren't funded, then that would be part of the regular city budget process. Staff would suggest that whatever urban renewal agency tools you create, that you just replicate that for the city, which would make things simple. And then if, if a property is outside the urban renewal district, that would be a city fund, and if it's inside, it would be urban renewal fund. The difference for this toolbox for the city, of course, would be an annual budget allocation. With urban renewal, it is a revolving loan program. And so while those monies do have to be budgeted each year, the money doesn't really go anywhere because as the loans are paid off, they go back into the revolving loan fund. Are there any questions or did I miss anything on the recap that you'd like me to cover?
Counselor Mark?
I, I love the idea if you can just sort of, what you said, replicate the same ideas for the city and come back to us with what the proposals that you think might work best or however you want to do that. I did have a concern, I'm looking at this, the downtown manager. Manager funding, and so BAMA was the only organization that took advantage of the funding to fund a manager?
Yes, and so I mentioned at the Urban Renewal Agency meeting that there are really two ways that a tool is created. One is we have an idea of what kind of a tool is needed, and the other way, we imagine that a tool could be useful based on community input or conversations with businesses. This was a tool that we had in the toolbox that other communities have used in the past, and when we originally brought the toolbox to the Urban Renewal Agency, of course, that's public, to see, here's the whole bucket of tools that's possible, and the Bay Area Merchants Association worked with staff for about two years to come up with and address any concerns for what that program would be as a Downtown Manager Tool. If we were to move that forward, what would it look like? And they basically provided a proposal, vetted through staff, and then once staff was comfortable with that proposal, we took that to the Loan Committee, Loan or Grant Committee at the agency, and then the agency decided whether or not to approve that. It was basically a two-year pilot project for the Downtown Manager. So that is how that tool was developed.
Do you follow anything more on that?
Well, I, so if we would continue that particular program, does that, is there any concern about that money going to just one area of the city, or are there other regions of the city that might want to have a manager, or does it conflict with the Chamber and all that? What's the story there?
Sure. We had many discussions about that. The, you know, really through the budget process, you can make allocation of funding for any of these tools. The Bay Area Merchants Association was the business merchants association that seemed to have capacity and interest for the tool. The Chamber, while, you know, they may find some tools, that one included, maybe to help fund something, they haven't spoken directly to us about any specific tool. The idea also with the pilot project was that it would be limited to two years or $28,000 per year, and that the idea would be they would be self-sustaining at the end of that funding cycle. So it was really just to jumpstart and get them going. Again, I don't know if there are other agencies that are interested in that specific tool. Usually, cities have one downtown. We fortunately have six or more, and, you know, usually then cities have one downtown manager, or one Main Streets manager, and they are the, kind of the conduit or the representative in addition to the Chamber and/or in addition to a visitor and convention committee bureau, sorry. So usually, these people all understand their roles in the sandbox and how to support one another's efforts. So that's typically what cities do when they have a downtown manager.
Counselor?
Okay. There was a, your idea of, you know, using the same list for both of them, and I think although that looks more simple, it might be more complicated because the agency may not wish to include residential housing. I mean, there was no real clear direction there, and it's, to me, fits perfectly in the city toolbox, and so I'm not sure that it'll be that simple. Sorry. Just don't know.
No, that's, that's fine. It's really up to you to decide what your objectives are and what tools are going to help you achieve those objectives, in which parts of town.
Any questions from? Allison, I guess the question I have, when I think of economic development, and you're half, you're half working on economic development, as to opportunities that come along, that we may, we don't know about today, otherwise we'd be working on them, but may hit you mid-budget or mid-fiscal year, and to me, I think that's part of this $100,000. We'd kind of thrown it in there to say, you know, if something comes along to partner with, and I have no idea. Yeah, I'll use the D River. Let me use the D River as an example. We, Urban Renewal, has a property there. If somebody else came along and had great ideas to revitalize that area, I'm not sure, other than our land, and that's urban renewal land, right?
Yes.
That thought. So as the city wanted to partner as an economic development tool, where would the money come from? Would, do we have to have, we'd have to have a tool? Is that what we're trying to think about, is for you in the future, when opportunities come along, how you partner with somebody, what tool you use to partner with them? And I think that was kind of the thought that Counselor Casper, when we were talking about infrastructure and fiber and that kind of stuff, to partner with a company that puts that stuff in, maybe not pay for it all, but, you know, partner. And so we'd have to have a tool, or, or as I look to Mr. Chandler, who controls the purse strings, can't we just write a check?
Yeah, we, we haven't prioritized the use of that $100,000, and my concern is that we won't have tools available to request for our public property partnerships, and I would rather, my personal opinion, work personal opinion, is that we have a bucket of tools available for people to request, rather than hold the developers up if they have a request, whether it be for, you know, mixed-use housing loan, or prepaid development fees, or something like that, or a brownfield assessment on land, that we have to then create a tool while the developer's waiting and needing some assistance to get their project going. So that's my number one kind of concern, is we don't have any city tools now, so.
Other than land?
Other than land.
We have land.
That's right.
But I guess what I'm wondering, you know, we have ordinances now on system development deferrals, charge deferrals for housing, affordable housing and childcare.
Yes.
And I guess what I'm wondering, a tool, to me, kind of says, repeat, 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 and I'm a little embarrassed, other than the facade loans, there's not a lot of repeating in urban renewal programs. So do we, do we have to go to this minutia, this detail, this process of creating a tool that may only get used once for a specific project because a developer asks, where we, we could have a fund that still gets, has to be approved, but in your negotiation with X? So the council is evaluating, you know, whether it's land and system charges and everything else, what it takes to move this project forward?
I don't think what you have described are mutually exclusive options. So, for example, especially in the area of our own land development, we have these set of tools that are kind of the standards, but a developer comes in, he makes a proposal on the purchase of our own property, where we're now negotiating the sale of that property. We have a lot more flexibility to do exactly what you're talking about. I think what is helpful with the tools is when we are talking about private property development. That gives us a little bit more guidance as to what the staff will follow and what the staff will do and what the staff won't do. And so, and for me, these tools become very, very helpful when we're talking private property development. We have much more flexibility with our own property because we will sell it based upon the terms that we agree upon. Because I'm not so sure you want to put all that much trust in me.
At 9:20, I don't think we're really excited.
I'm excited.
You're excited. So.
Do you, do you want me to run through the list that was discussed at Urban Renewal that you'd like me to bring back a little more information of?
Why don't you, so we know that we've got the same checkmarks.
Okay. So one was for childcare, the internet conversion loan, energy efficiency for residential, brownfield tool, something to address the residential over business in some combination where the business would take out a loan and also at the same time improve the residential units above, facade improvement for residential, the gap fund, and sign change-out tool, and the workforce development tool. Oh, last one, infrastructure partners tool, because we talked about how that might be a better fit to address fiber or internet support. Did I get them all? Are there any others you want to add?
I think that's what I had, anyway. It's a good starting spot. I guess, for me, I need to think of the partner, private property. That, I'll admit, I was thinking of our own properties and where we, so.
Yeah.
Okay. So did we get enough work for you, you know, to?
In, in two weeks. The packet deadline is actually less than two weeks, so yes, thank you very much. Perfect.
Thank you. Thank you. Sorry for taking so much time. It was very interesting and helpful, though.
No worries. Thanks for your feedback.
Okay. Let's, we have the final special order of business. We have a proclamation. Chief, can I handle this, or do you want to handle this?
Actually have had our HR director waiting to be able to handle.
Please, come on up.
She's the, she's the last of the staff besides the three of us at the stand.
So then let's make her pay, huh? That's it, Colleen. Thank you. Share with us.
Good evening. Tonight you have before you a proclamation for recognizing 911 dispatchers during, and I do not have the agenda thing in front of me, during, I believe it's the week of the 8th of April, 2019.
Second week of April.
14th through 20th.
And this is something that's been going on for years. Last year, we failed to recognize them, but recognized the police for their week in May, so this is correcting my errors from last year, and officially recognizing the hard work our 911 dispatchers do every day, helping to protect our city and keeping our police safe.
Could I read it?
You may, please.
If it's all right with counsel, then we can. The City of Lincoln City would like to honor the 911 dispatchers of Lincoln City Police Department by proclaiming April 14th to the 20th National Public Safety Telecommunicator, Communicator Week with the following proclamation: Whereas emergencies can occur at any time that require police, fire, or emergency medical services, and whereas when emergency occurs, the prompt response of police officers, firefighters, and paramedics is critical to the protection of life and the preservation of property, and whereas the safety of our police officers and firefighters is dependent upon the quality and accuracy of the information obtained from citizens who telephone the City of Lincoln City Emergency Communications Center, and whereas the public safety telecommunicators are the first and most critical contact our citizens have with emergency services, and whereas the public safety telecommunicators are the single vital link for our police officers and firefighters by monitoring their activities by radio, providing them information, and ensuring their safety, and whereas public safety telecommunicators of the City of Lincoln City have contributed substantially to the apprehension of criminals, suppression of fire, and treatment of patients, and whereas each dispatcher has exhibited compassion, understanding, and professionalism during the performance of their job in the past year. Therefore, be resolved that the City Council of the City of Lincoln City declares the week of April 14th through 20th, 2019, the National Public Safety Telecommunicator Week in the City of Lincoln City in honor of the men and women who diligence, whose diligence and professionalism keep our city citizens safe.
And I encourage you during that week to stop in to the police station and thank them for their service. They work very hard, and they deal with very stressful situations calmly, and they should be commended for the job they do for the city.
How do we distract a dispatcher, you know, to say thanks to them? We don't want to go through.
Until they're off shift.
When they're off shift.
We can't give them the week off, though, I guess.
Can't give, well, you could, but you might have to deal with the chief on that one.
Oh, good. That's true. Great.
Send them an email.
Great. Happy to do it, and happy to have the proclamation. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we will stop you.
And have a good evening.
All right. Thanks for staying.
You're welcome.
All right. How about, oh, city manager and city attorney reports?
Nothing for me.
We wore you out, huh?
We did.
I knew we could do that. City Attorney, great. Now, this is the test. Public comments. We wore them out. If I could, could we go back to the public comments? Mr. Baird had, I think, some misinformation, it sounded like, in his comments regarding VRDs being added in Rhodes End. There's no additions. There may be rolling over. Is that my understanding?
There could be an accessory VRD added.
Oh, well, yeah.
That could be. But what we've had since the adoption of our ordinance is we have had a decrease of the total numbers. We also have had some transfer. If you recall, they were allowed to transfer up to, the transfer of license up to a seven-year period, so we have had those. We have not had any new ones that have been added unless they are the 30 days.
Accessory use.
Yeah. I might also point out, since I have the mic, for the rest of the area, the R1-5 zone, we have reached the cap limit, and we do have a waiting list. I think it's a half a dozen to 10 or so that are on that list now.
Counselor?
I was just going to say about, I talked with Stacy Baird about this, and I asked him if that was the 30-day accessory VRD that he was referring to even tonight, and he didn't think so, but it brought up a question for me, is do we say on those mailers that it's the 30-day, or if it's the 365?
I'll have to check.
Because that could be real confusing, and that might be part of it. The other part of what he said, though, I don't understand, was that...
Deferred agreement, yeah. I didn't understand the deferred improvement agreements. Because at, first I thought it was sidewalks and stuff, but he's talking...
I'll have to, I made a note to check that.
Okay.
We do have deferred improvement agreements that we have given throughout the years. I don't know how many of those are in Rhodes End, because, of course, that's a more newly annexed property. The purpose of the deferred improvement agreement is it's sidewalks. That we don't require the sidewalks to be installed because then you have sidewalks with no boundaries on them. with no boundaries on them. We have a number of, we have quite a few deferred improvement agreements. I will let you know how many and generally the locations.
Well, the other thing that he quickly rolled into the commercial, implying, you know, the VRDs and full-time, 365 nights, is commercial, and they are, but I don't think he understands it's still limited to 16, per bedroom, anyway, at least it's a bedroom count.
That's true.
Occupancy. So I, it just seemed like a lot of misinformation. I wondered if anybody's really sat down with him, helped walk through these?
I talked with him for quite some time, and I think when he was speaking tonight, it sounded like VRDs that had deferred improvement, but I know that there's a house that is just being built adjacent to his property, or his family's property, and so we talked about the sidewalk, and why, you know, why council decided to defer until we have enough in an area to build it, and so I don't know if he was, I mean, tonight it sounded like he was talking about a VRD with a deferred, and, but that, that wouldn't be the same case, then.
Right. We'll follow up on it, give you some information, and I'll pass some information on to him as well.
And the other is, I don't ever remember promising a better life through annexation, but I'm sure...
That was before my time.[1673.15][1673.15](laughter)
I could answer that one.
Oh, better life.[1677.83][1677.83](laughter)
I remember. How about comments from counsel? Mr. Hoagland? Counselor Mark? Counselor Hinton? Skip?
Lifely book.[1693.15][1693.15](laughter)
We're adjourned, then. Thank you.
Thanks for the pizza.
All right. So I'll see you at 15:00, I'll see you at 15:30 on Friday.
All right, see you tomorrow at?
Lunch?
Before 8:00? Casino bingo.
So what time are we?
You follow all that?[1716.15][1716.15](laughter) Okay, your question.